Welcome, everybody. Thank you, voice from above. I'd like to welcome everyone to the November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Sister City Council Workshop. And first up, we have Lieutenant Chad Davis with Deschutes County Sheriff's Office.
Good evening, everybody. Any questions? That's my car.
That's special.
That's on my, that's on my list of things to talk about. So um, obviously with the new sheriff, we, we have certain changes that when, when we, a new sheriff comes in, into office and one of the things was our vehicle decals. And so some of you may have seen some of the dark green decals on some of our cars that are like our west deputies typically drive. We had a discussion with the sheriff, um, with a discussion with the city as well about uh, what those might look like and we kind of advocated for a very high visibility uh sticker package. So you'll see all of our City of Sisters cars are displaying white stickers on the black, which it really stands out in the crowd. And that's what we want. We want high visibility and and we don't want to be in the shadows. We want to be very visible to the public and our visitors. You'll see all the patrol cars now displaying those white stickers along the City of Sisters seal and whatnot. So we just got those finished uh last week. So you'll see those.
Can we get five or six more vehicles just to park around town, just to slow people down or?
Yeah, you know, yeah, I've seen those around. Um, had a meeting with the Forest Service today, just kind of an informal meeting, but our whole team was working. So we met with Jeremy Fields today and started talking about some projects that we're looking at, uh, hopefully moving forward with after the first of the year. Um, now that they're back to work and um their staffing levels coming up, then we're going to be working on some uh camps and, and projects and stuff uh if out in Sisters country, but it relates to things that go on here in town. So that was good. What's that?
I said, I appreciate that.
Yes.
Being team.
Yeah, and we worked very well with, with Ian and his team and Jeremy's attend. So um, we continue to work with him on some of our problem camps.
Was, was there kind of an uh increase because there hadn't been a presence for a few months?
Uh, I don't know that it's necessarily from that. I said in one other meeting, you know, we have some businesses that are growing in town and that's attracting some folks that are coming here for work but don't have housing. So we saw at least one camp that was the result of people working in town that needing close housing and so they're living out in the woods. So and I talked with someone else about, you know, that maybe being something that the business community might start talking about is finding some other housing alternatives for some of their folks that they're bringing in, which is good. Um, I had a chance to go out to Core uh this week and on a call for service, but we visited with Lou Blanchard and saw their operation out there and made some good connects with some people that were were visiting Core. So that was uh, that was good. And then as part of my duties, uh, as a bigger part of the sheriff's office, I'm now supervising our City of Lepine Sergeant, that position changed to from a lieutenant to a sergeant. Uh, Sergeant Kyle Kalmbach and uh, he and I worked together several years as detectives and so we have a good collaboration there. And we're bouncing ideas off of each other. Obviously have a different community than ours, but we have some similarities dealing with traffic issues and and houseless issues, things like that. So we're able to collaborate, talk about some uh different programs that we're instituting and they, they do some different community events down there that we might try to emulate back here. And so I'll be going down, meeting with their city manager, mayor here first of, first part of December, just to kind of touch bases and, and just let them know that I'm here to support Kyle and vice versa. So.
How big is their team?
Uh, it's a, it's a sergeant, one deputy. So much smaller than ours. Um, I think they have plans in the future to, to go up to and add another deputy. Um, but like our situation, it's been mostly the sheriff's office staffing issues that have kind of limited that. So it's something that we're, we're working on. So. That's all I have. Unless you have questions.
Thank you. Um, so we received an email about a noise complaint from a local establishment. Can you just walk us through what happens when you get a call like that? And in particular, this was a business playing music very loud. Um, can you kind of, how do you know it's too loud? How do, how does that all work?
Yeah, in that instance, uh, the business did have a noise permit to basically violate the, the C ordinance temporarily for that, that event. And we did have a few citizens call in and what we, I was off duty at the time, but one of our sergeants reached out to me and just verified whether the city had, or the establishment had a, a variance to the, or had a permit. And so we just told the citizen that was calling in. It's like, hey, you know, they have authorization to go till, I believe it was midnight. They actually stopped before that. But one of our sergeants did go and make contact with the business that did turn it down. So, and they ended early. So we just tried to educate, you know, we have that occasionally during Folk Festival where people will, aren't used to Folk Festival and all of a sudden music's going till midnight, one o'clock and and they're trying to get some sleep. And we're like, it's Folk Festival and they have the permits to, to go beyond that. So we did have some discussion about some maybe sound measuring devices. We don't have those. Um, and there are some decibel limits and stuff that are applicable. So we may look into getting something like that just to verify that the businesses are, are following the permit.
Okay.
So yeah, mostly just education and because some people, we have people that are, you know, maybe they're renting here or they haven't been here before for some of these events. And so sometimes it's an education thing that, hey, we have some of these live events and yes, they can go till midnight. It's authorized and we hear you, but you know, they have permission from the city to violate it for at least that, that night. And so.
I was, I was going to ask the same question, but if they had decibel meters or not, I think that, you know, it's, it's one thing for us to issue the permits because we do. But sometimes we have uh, not necessarily the venue, but the band itself kind of likes to crank it a little bit more and you know, what they're going to do to us kind of a thing. And so if we did have some sort of a maybe it means that we need to talk about sort of a uh decimal limit, if there isn't something in the code right now as to what they can exceed in the noise ordinance. And so stand outside the fence or on the street and significantly louder gives the ability to go in and say the proprietor, you your way up there, you got it. Cause it doesn't take much of an increase to really make a difference.
Yeah, I would say that the business owner was responding to our request. So that's good to know. That was good.
I'm, I'm fairly sure it was a DJ at that particular night. Um, and uh, one of the things that I hear about a lot is, you know, how do you measure the bass part? Because those bass notes reverberate a lot more than the higher notes. And I think that um I don't know if there, I don't know enough about the science part of it, but there's probably something about, hey, if you can just turn the bass down a little bit, so it's not booming windows and things like that. Because it's not just the noise level, it's that, it's, it's the wave part of it that makes houses shake um far away. And it, it might be within the sound code of that, but it, it also uh, you know, we've all heard the teenagers going down the street with the bass way up. It's a lot different. And so um, I, it's something that we all need to think about and it's not an easy one because it's so part of our culture, but at the same time, sometimes it's a pain, you know? So it's hard. It's hard for all of us, right?
How do you know they're teenagers there, Michael? How do you know they're teenagers?
Well.
Just saying.
Yeah. Uh, I think this one too, since it was like on November first, was kind of out of character for Sisters two, a late event. So that may have caught some folks off guard.
Yeah, I we could, and this could be a work session item on its own. I mean, um, you know, businesses are permitted, I think, two additional like noise permits outside of the window of the major, you know, citywide event period, but permitted up to like one AM, you know, and, and maybe that's too late. Maybe we have to be more reasonable, like a 10 PM or something. Um, and I think there is different ways to measure the D, like we measure decibels, but there might be other ways to measure the bass too. Um, but having a code that, you know, is based on decibels, I think it's sixty-five is what we cap it at. Um, but then not having the the device to measure that is a, is a big gap. Like, you know, if we have a, a pretty objective code, we need to have the device that measures that. Um, so we can actually respond and say, yeah, you're, you're at seventy-five. You need to turn it down.
And that's probably something that we could.
The devices are terribly expensive.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I have, my watch has one in it, like.
Oh, we'll just call it.
It tells me when I have the start, the radio turned up too high in the shower. Actually, actually the shower ticks it off because the water hits the, the glass. But uh, when I'm working in my shop, oftentimes it'll go off and alert me that I should have my ear protection on.
I, I have a friend that's a doctor of audiology, so I asked her about that same question. I mean, I had the same thought and she said, yeah, there's, you know, decibels like in our code is like, you know, DBA and there's, there's a range called DVC that picks up bass more, but she, she's like, eh, it's not like it could be negligible, but, but that's really what, yeah, exactly what you're asking is there is, there is a scale. So I mean, that's another question to look at that, but um, how nuanced do we want to get if we crack open the code again? But lots of things, but.
Well, again, if you just have a device that you can walk up and measure whatever it is. And if it's, if it's up in the eighties to nineties, that's pretty excessive. And it's actually at a point where it can cause hearing loss to people that are standing out in front of the antistuck, you know? I, I'm surprised I could still hear for some of the things I did in my youth, but um, you know, so I think that, that something like that, that at least makes it not so much subjective as objective. Something to think about. I mean, we could probably.
The best part about the conversation that we've had so far is that the business owner was responsive. So thank you to that person and that business for at least checking themselves a little bit on the first time that we can think of for a while. Anyway.
I have another question. Um, so I went to a forum yesterday on the uh, kind of the uh state of mental health in Central Oregon, and there was a lot of talk about the stabilization center and um one of the benefits of it is for the sheriff's office to be able to bring people there if um, instead of having to bring them to jail or to the hospital kind of thing. And I was just curious how much y'all have used it? I mean, I know we're just one of a few cities and jurisdictions, but.
Yeah, we, we use it and we offer it to folks if they don't meet the criteria for a police officer hold. So if the criteria for that is if you have probable cause of there danger to themselves or others, then we can take people into custody, take them to the hospital. But the people who don't quite make that threshold, but maybe have some suicidal ideation, not making, you know, certain steps to that, but they're just having those thoughts. Um, we offer that. And then we also have um, our community crisis team that can respond out to the field. And they come out, uh, they're from part of behavioral health and they come out two sisters um, and go to calls for service with us, or they actually deflect some calls too that maybe someone is just saying, or they have a friend who's suicidal. And then they will, they see those calls come through dispatch and then they either get assigned directly or they can jump on that call themselves, or we can make a referral like, hmm, this is not law enforcement yet. Like maybe this could be a little intervention using CCRT to not only give that person, someone who's highly trained, but also not tie up a resource, a law enforcement resource to go to that call who then is still going to end up needing those resources from the county. So they do deflect calls from, from us having a response and can either set someone up for a session with them or make other referrals. So we do use, we kind of have, you know, all these things at our disposal, whether it's a hospital for obvious cases where it's, it's an acute case, then yeah, they need to go to the hospital. There's been a direct attempt um, on taking their life and, and we're going to take them in, whether it's us or medics. And then the next tier down is stabilization center, but that has to be voluntary. We can't take them against their will to the stabilization center. So and that's available for adults and juveniles as well. Um, and it can be a respite care as well where sometimes people need to just either, whether it's get out of the cold or get out of a bad situation. And there's some respite suites there. Basically, I think they have about four or five different kind of quiet rooms where people can come in for just respite care and just to get away and to talk to somebody, but just kind of get out of the situation they're in. So and then make a connection with the counselor too.
Yeah.
That's the other thing. Get them at the stabilization center, get them comfortable and then, okay, would you want to engage in services? You're not feeling well. And so it's an opportunity to do that as well. So but our teams have uh, the, we call it CCRT, the Community Crisis Response Team. They come out two sisters when we, when we ask or, or we'll make those phone calls.
Okay, thanks. I just um because we're just um like physically separate, I was curious, you know, Sisters is farther away. I was just curious of how much that was being used and, but it's interesting to know that you could have um people come here to do some help.
Yeah, and, and we'll give rides to people too where it's, it's that, they don't meet, quite meet that police officer hold threshold, but we know they still need some help. Then you have those options. If they're willing, we'll give them a ride or have family take them in. Um, or CCRT can come out into the field and, and talk to them at home. It just kind of depends.
Okay.
So yeah, we, we utilize that resource whenever we can. So.
Thank you.
It's probably a good reminder that we talk to the county a little more often and making, making sure that that place is being utilized
Yep.
as well as it can. Because I did read an article about one in Portland that had less than two people per day come in. And I would bet we, we have more than that going in, in our county. So
Yeah.
we might want to touch base with if we ever have another joint meeting, we might want to ask them or at least check in and making sure that overall it's being properly used for all across the board.
The person who is uh, in the forum was, I believe that um she was a she was definitely a, a manager in the Deschutes County Health System. So she, but she was um, higher up than just behavioral health. She had more than that under her, but including the stabilization center.
Yeah. Did they say it was working pretty well?
Um, they seem to think so. Um I suspect they have, you know, waves.
Sure.
But no, just interesting conversation, learning about what the um, different levers to pull are.
Well, and they're serving all of Deschutes County. So Redmond, PD, Bend PD, Sun Herbert, you know, all the police agencies are working with them and making referrals. So it's not obviously just the sheriff's office there. They're very busy.
Where is it located?
Um.
It's on, it's on Jameson Street, the, right by the sheriff's office. It, it is right adjacent to our office, right off of Jameson, right off of Highway twenty.
Okay.
So and then they have a lot of walk-ins as well, you know, where they have people coming, seeking services there as well.
If you go by Costco and you fit that kind of funky turn you could make that goes to the new fire station right down in there?
Yeah.
If you go down that road, take that turn down the road towards the AAA building is right there. The big sign outside says, but you'll see it just right on the highway. Looks, it's, it's a pleasant looking facility. Doesn't look scary or jail-like or anything like that. It's, looks like a building.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much, Lieutenant. Up next, we have Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council and of course, three updates. Tammy Bany and Shelby Knight.
Hold it down for about three seconds.
There you go.
There we go. Okay.
Uh, good evening. Thank you for having us.
Relatively close to it.
Tammy Bany, Executive Director at COIC.
Nice. And, oh, Shelby Knight. I am the Community Development Programs Administrator at COIC.
So we are going to do a brief flyover of COIC and some of the things that we're working on in your community, along with your community and primarily do an overview of the Core Three project so that you all have an update on where we are. Uh, the big we, all of us in terms of that project for the region as well. So thank you for having us. Uh, wonderful to see everyone again. We were here earlier for the ribbon cutting for the Gateway Mobility Hub. Super excited to see that uh kickoff. So first, uh, there we go here. Nope. Oh, it's not one of those. All right. You can't touch a screen. I'm one of those people where I have all the fingerprints on it. Yes, I know. Okay. So for those of us, uh, for those who are not familiar with what COIC is, we are a council of governments. We have your local government off to the left-hand side where there fairly prescribed things that cities, counties and the local government um, does for the community and a council of governments is a little bit more um, varied, if you will, in terms of the things in which we can do to support your community. And so I always love to use this graphic to start out, uh, just showing that uh, one of the values that we hold dearly is that we want to be nimble, but we also want to make sure that we are good at what we do and we're not spread too thin. Uh, but we are meant to complement the work that cities and counties and our tribal communities do. And our job is to make sure that we can help uh facilitate the things that maybe you don't want to do on your own that you can't do on your own, or maybe that you shouldn't do on your own. And maybe one of the best examples is if Sister were, Sisters were to try and stand up your own transit system for the region to draw in people. Uh, that would be quite a lift for your community. And so maybe that's an example of things that we do together. So unless you want to start the, I mean, we we can, uh, I'd be happy to facilitate a discussion of taking transit over uh, from COIC, which is uh, happy to, I'll make a note of that. Okay, thank you. So uh, next we have a, oh, now it's, okay. And our mission to serve the diverse Central Oregon region by promoting collaboration, leveraging and aligning resources and delivering valuable services for a strong economy and healthy communities. And so that really is the reason that we exist. We've been around since nineteen seventy-two. And we have five core service areas. And again, councils of governments have um, they look different across the United States. Each one looks different because they are meant to reflect what the region needs them or the community needs them to do. So for us, we partner with the State of Oregon with WorkSource and we provide adult employment training services through WorkSource. We also have a youth department and we do both uh outreach in terms of youth employment and training. That's under the brand of Compass and that's working closely with our workforce investment board. In addition, we also have youth education. So we operate alternative education high schools. And so we serve students all across the region, uh, depending on what their needs are, primarily out of the Redmond and Bend areas. We do have a program in Lepine and in Prinville as well. And then we do some um internship and, and other resources within the Madras community. And so students from the Sisters community would be served out of Redmond. That may seem a little bit strange, but we also have transportation and uh, we do a lot of online resources as well. We also have Community and Economic Development Department. And under that, we are also your Economic Development District for the region. And so that is a designation by the federal government. We are required to do the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, the SEDS. Uh, and that is an important document because it helps cities, counties and tribal communities be able to have the planning documents available for, let's say broadband expansion. Uh, you could do your own city broadband study and then uh, have that be something that you have ready for federal dollars that are coming into your community. Or we can maybe be looking on your behalf for a grant, which we did. And being able to do regional planning, then we look at those jurisdictional boundaries which broadband don't, doesn't really care about. And what does that mean for a region to grow? And so that you can have the planning document, both from a county perspective and uniquely to a city perspective. And then that allows you to be able to provide that to the federal government or the state when the um, opportunity for funding comes along. And so we do a lot of that uh, on your behalf. And in addition, we also have a loan program. And uh, that provides business loans or uh, small loans to startup businesses that might be looking to expand. Uh, they might be looking to maybe go from a garage of a cake shop and maybe go to a storefront. So it can be everything from a twenty-five thousand dollar grant to all the way to two hundred and fifty or even more. So it just depends on what the needs are. And then our last department, of course, is the one that will be soon turning over to the City of Sisters and that is transit. And so we are the transit provider for Central Oregon. And so we provide the uh recreational services. So we partner with Mount Bachelor. Uh, yes, they do pay for the service. And so uh, we do get, uh, we are able to get some federal grants that help offset that, but that is paid for by Mount Bachelor. Uh, Lava Butte, we also provide the services there, Ride the River in Bend. And then we do, most of our ridership is in the community connectors going into and out of the region. And so um, we also provide the deviated service, which is in the City of Redmond, as well as the fixed routes uh, system in the City of Bend. And I, I would say that this is an area for us where um, we recognize that maybe a fixed route service is not going to be what the general rider is looking for these days. They want something a little bit more on demand. And so we've been working really hard to refresh the department and actually build those foundational capabilities to be able to start some piloting of some on-demand and different ways in which we serve communities. That is not standing at a bus stop waiting for a, a bus every fifteen or thirty minutes. And so those are some of the services that we provide. And I wanted to just do a quick flyover of the things that we've been doing within the Sisters Country community. And so first and foremost, we had the ribbon cutting of your Gateway Park and the Mobility Hub. Um, that was a really great partnership to bring those services. And what a beautiful uh, really asset to the, to the community and to the region, really. Uh, we also were able through the Central Oregon Wildfire WorkSource Partnership, be able to bring resources in partnership with uh, Kellen with the um, visioning that he's been doing and the implementation team that he's been working on at C4C. Being able to make sure that if there's um, resources that need to be um, fence building, brush clearing, that sort of thing. We have the um COWWP teams that can come in and help. And that's uh, youth who are matched up with the crew leader to be able to go in and do some of that work. They get mentoring and they get a paycheck and then you get the removal within your community and some uh goodwill to uh private property owners. In addition to that, we are a member of the Visioning Implementation Team. And so uh, one of the most recent things that came out of that was bringing MERV to your community. For those that don't know, MERV, MERV is the Mobile Employment Resource Van. And MERV is essentially the ability to bring workforce services uh, to the community here, whether that's um certainly rapid response. If you have the unfortunate closing of a business, we want to get those folks re-employed before they lose their employment. But it might be um, working with someone who hasn't been employed for a while and they want to have a uh, a resume that they want to rebuild, or maybe they need some coaching, maybe they want to go back to school. And so our team is skilled to be able to sit with them and work with them and find out what their goals are and have an opportunity to um, do that within their own community and not need to go to an outside area. It also helps us not have to have fixed office space. It's a lot easier for us to be more nimble and provide those resources at a lower cost to your community and be able to provide uh, what, what typically is not in our smaller communities because of that um, office space and the need to have full-time staff. Uh, we also have a couple of things that I wanted to mention to you is that we have some uh untapped resources right now that are available to your community and just wanted to make sure that you know that. One of the things that we do on your behalf, because you um, are part of our organization, uh, we look for grants to be able to bring money to your community so that you are uh, able to do some of the things that you want to do without needing to use your very limited resources. So in partnerships uh, such as working with the Ford Family Foundation, we have some rural capacity building dollars that um, we have access to grant writing or even grant research related to housing, infrastructure and community facilities. And again, that's at no cost. And then we also have some economic development opportunities that we could match you up as well. And so if you have a project that is related to economic development, we have some ability for assistance, technical assistance, either in being able to write a grant, uh, research a project, scope a project, that sort of thing. So uh, we see our role as an opportunity to sit beside you and help scope things, take a dream and put it into a white paper and then hunt and find some funding to be able to make it uh, come to life.
I don't see why we wouldn't want that.
Yes, exactly, exactly. And so just having a partner that's out there uh, being able to hunt and find those things so that you um, it offsets your limited resources that you have and oftentimes, and it may not be a city project, but it might be a community project and um, being able to scope and take what that is in terms of, of an idea into something that's actually able to be um, shopped, if you will, for grants or for other opportunities. Uh, our team is really skilled at that.
Cool.
Yeah. And then last but not least, Core Three. And so uh, before I turn it over to Shelby, who's going to do the flyover of Core Three, I wanted to say thank you very much to uh, City Manager Wheeler, who has been uh, actively involved in the regional administrator meetings. And so we facilitate quarterly meetings where we bring the city administrators and the county administrators together. They uh, banter back and forth, really is a lot of the meeting, but uh, it's, it's learning from one another, sharing uh, challenges, coming up with solutions, things that they're trying to prep or things that they're working on that you were working on. And there's a synergy and alignment of that and being able to um, not just learn from one another, but leverage that um, those thoughts and and go after resources together. And the other is, I also wanted to say thank you to Counselor Pellerin and to uh, Council President McDougal for your involvement in COIC in general. Um, having your voice at the table is really important because we know that the economic vitality and the health of your community is a reflection of the entire region. And so thank you for being a part of that and for uh, volunteering your time on our board as well. So.
Well, I just want to say thank you. Um, honestly, I, um, you know, just for anyone who doesn't know, I'm on the, the coordinated houseless response office and the Regional Housing Committee Commission, something. Anyway, but I, I don't, I think it's the best place for it, you know, from a, from a larger community standpoint and bringing resources together. And I appreciate your leadership. I know sometimes I kind of laugh because everyone's a little hesitant to. because everyone's a little hesitant to want to lead in that space. And, you know, you've come back and done it time after time. And, and recently you were asking, does someone else want to do this? And the answer was no. And you, you know, I think you're handling it very well as a team. So thank you.
Well, I appreciate that very much. And if anybody's ready to take the ball, happy to hand it off.
I'm sure.
And I do want to thank you for not having graphics on the bus yet because when we rename it to the new Sisters internal or transport, it's going to be called Sitin, which stands for Sisters Inner City Transportation is Nice.
I love it. Well, if I may, our intention is to have local photos from your community on the buses that are serving your community. And so it's by design that we don't have graphics on them right now. And so I thought it actually, they had asked for a photo of you on it. So I, I will.
Only, it's probably going to be in the back.
Okay. So.
Right above the exhaust pipe.
Exactly. Yes. Well.
I think the Swiss Army knife is a great graphic to use for your organization. You do a great job of managing all those different, you know, services don't have, they don't have a home. And I actually have more of a very specific question about the role of the council of government. If you might be familiar with like the moderate income loan program, the state rolled out. Is, is the council of governments eligible to be like a sponsoring jurisdiction for programs like that?
Yes.
Okay. Have you had conversations with other communities?
Not yet. No.
Might be something to add to.
Okay.
You know, tools that, you know, Deschutes County only have four cities, right? The region we have one, six. And a lot of us don't have the capabilities or the staffing to do things like housing, affordable housing, homelessness, and having a council of governments that have that capability.
You know, the great thing is that we really can be what it is that you need and it's economy of scale. So, you know, happy to have that conversation. And, and I would suspect that that's something that the other jurisdictions would be interested in as well. So, yeah, happy to.
Okay. Thank you all are ready for me. Tough act to follow as always, but thank you so much to the council for having us. Tammy can attest to the fact that I love to talk about this project. So I'm just really excited to be here. I think it's a great one. It's got a lot of great partners, a lot of great momentum. And it really, you know, has a lot of synergy in terms of community importance and value. And so, yeah, just really wanted to say I'm grateful for, for the invitation and opportunity to talk about the Core Three project. I know we have limited time here, so I'm going to breeze through a little bit of these, but please stop me if there's anything you want any more information on. I would also love to come have coffee with you and chat and follow up more. So you'll have my contact information. You'll have access to Tammy, et cetera. So Core Three, I really just wanted to start with sort of what's the vision that we've brought together for this project and process? So it is envisioned as sort of a Swiss Army knife, if you might, for public safety, emergency coordination and response and training and workforce development. So it's got the three components. The first is it's a dedicated multi-agency emergency coordination center for emergency operations. So if there is a disaster or an event, you have many different folks in emergency management and public safety, even in, you know, community infrastructure, you've got transportation, all kind of working together to respond to that and get things up and running and, you know, keep the community safe, et cetera. It's also a resilient space for continuity of state of governance functions. So we are working with the state on what that would look like for them to be able to operate in some form or another. And what that looks like is, you know, in the details, but in the event that, you know, their, their resources were down in the west of the Cascades. And then finally, it's, you know, day-to-day, hopefully it's not being used for either of those. And so it's a space for our emergency services folks to access training, both at the local level, but also for our state partners east of the Cascades, which, which as of right now, we don't have facilities, which we're going to talk about here in a second. Oh, that's not working for mine. Okay. So why do we, sort of what was the impetus of Core Three? As we all know, there is this thing called the Cascadia Event that is looming over the state of Oregon and the Pacific Northwest in general. What we might not know is, you know, the, the varying degrees of impact to different portions of the state as well as Central Oregon's role in emergency coordination and response, which is actually fairly big for, for the state. In addition, you know, we have, I mean, disasters are not getting easier. They're getting more complicated. They're getting more costly. We're, they're requiring us to pool resources, to pool our training and, and to work together to respond to in an effective way. And then, you know, wildfire is a big one for us, you know, in Sisters. I'm sure you guys are intimately familiar with that. And it's something that severely impacts our households and communities and economies. And if we can coordinate and respond together in a more effective way, we can help mitigate some of, some of that process. And then finally, again, the state needs a space in central and eastern Oregon where they can actually come over and help manage events in eastern Oregon. And we saw that in this latest fire season when there were some pretty significant conflagration events in eastern Oregon. And they were having to, you know, find spaces to bring in resources and coordinate that response. And so again, this is, you know, the, the need that's driving it. The thing I want to talk about here is really, again, the role of Central Oregon and specifically Redmond and the Redmond Airport in emergency response. So I'm not sure how many folks know this, but the Redmond Airport is actually designated federally as the incident support base, one of two in Oregon for when the Cascadia subduction zone event occurs. And so that means we're going to have a lot of people, a lot of resources and a lot of things flowing in from all over the nation, mostly from the east, and then being transported and distributed across the state to areas that are most impacted. And so we need, again, we're happy to serve in that function in Central Oregon. But as of right now, we do not have the space or the capacity or the infrastructure to be able to respond to, to an event that, of that size. And so ta-da, the solution, which has been a long time in the making. I know I'm making this sound super easy, but I think a lot of folks smarter than me have been working on this for many, many years to try to figure out how we respond to this and, and what we need in Central Oregon to be able to, to coordinate that component. And so, you know, I think Core Three is just a great project and a potential model for other areas for a couple of reasons. We, we toured other like facilities. So there are a couple across the nation that are similar. They have that training and emergency coordination component. You know, we have our own DPSST site here west of the Cascades. There's, we went to one in Washington County in Colorado, et cetera, and really did some like lessons learned with them. But what we found is that there's nothing to the scale of collaboration of what we're talking about with Core Three because we have that state and local coordination, but we also have, you know, all of our different communities across Central Oregon working together. We have police and fire. We have emergency management. We have cities and counties all trying to figure out how to work together to solve the problem. And, you know, align those resources and align those needs. And I say Swiss Army knife, but I, you know, I also think we've been really intentional about aligning what that looks like and making sure we're not, you know, creeping into spaces where, where there's existing infrastructure already and really trying to focus the mission on, on being able to respond to those events and train together in Central Oregon. Okay. And just for context, Core Three is sited in Redmond. Again, that's significant for a couple of reasons. The first is that Redmond is, you know, sort of the hub of Central Oregon, and this is meant to serve our entire region. The second is obviously the role of the airport as the incident support base. And so we really needed to make sure that the space was located close by to the airport so that we have that access to getting resources to and from. And then we have our designated mass care site at the Deschutes County Fair and Expo Center in Redmond, and that's where mass care would happen. So when you actually have individuals who are in need of shelter, food, water, supplies, et cetera, they will get that at the fairgrounds. And having these three things separate is actually a really good thing, but having them close by is also really important.
It starts to make sense why you'd have a fairground next to the airport.
Yes, that's right. Yep. So talking about that incident support base, I just, I love this graphic because it sort of shows, again, what the role of the Redmond Airport will be in disaster response for Cascadia. And so you'll see there's all these resources going to be coming from a variety of places east of us. And then they're all going to come into our lovely Redmond Airport. And then there's also one in the Klamath region. And then what happens is that that support then needs to get distributed again to the areas of the state that are going to be most impacted. And I don't know if you saw it, but the first map that I showed in my initial slide sort of showed the varying degrees of impact. And so, you know, our coastal communities specifically, and again, sort of west of the Cascades, Capitol, Portland, those, those areas as well. Okay. I apologize. This isn't the best graphic. It was really hard to fit it on the slide. So I'm happy to share it after. But this is our site concept and our site plan. We are through design development in terms of our design process for Phase One. And so we're working with a lovely architecture group and they really helped us conceptualize sort of what the full site would look like. So this is a three-hundred-acre property. It was dedicated to this use by Deschutes County. And they're a partner at the table helping us move this forward and make decisions and all of that good stuff. It was, you know, it's undeveloped. It's, it was initially outside of the UGB when we first got there. And, you know, that, that was a process in and of itself. Whoops. And so it was, you know, a lot of work to get it to the place that it is now. But again, it's really well-located and it gives us the opportunity for future expansion, which is one of the key things that we learned when we were talking to other sites across the nation is you're going to outgrow this space the minute that you move in. And so we were really thinking about, how do we serve the needs of Central Oregon now, but also how do we make space? And what's the opportunity for us to think about the future needs? And we've tried to map that out and phase that out, but also again, maintain some flexibility so that, because who knows what that might look like, you know, in thirty to fifty years. Also want to highlight, again, I spoke to this a little bit earlier, but this really is a collaboration of many, many folks and many agencies. One of my favorite parts of this project is, is working with these wonderful folks. And so we have about twenty-four different agencies at the table participating in varying degrees. Some are core partners. So they're, you know, helping make decisions. They're providing some funding for project management, et cetera. Some are supportive partners. So they might be connecting us to resources, you know, they're giving input, but they're maybe not making decisions or, you know, not financially supporting the project at this time. And then we have our state folks. We have about eleven state agencies at the table who are helping just guide the process. I also spoke to this a little bit earlier, which is, man, this has not been a quick and easy road. And so, you know, show this slide just to show that folks have been working on this for a really long time. And what's exciting to me is to see us at this space where we're pretty much shovel-ready. And we're, you know, sort of trying to finalize our investment from the state to build that emergency coordination center. When we started over here, all the way in twenty-eighteen, which I was not a part of that, but I have been working on the project for about four or five years now. So it's really great to see how far it's come. But there was a viability assessment done with University of Oregon. We went through, you know, a number of meetings and opportunities to create a business plan and model. What would this look like? And what would the, the need be? And where would we cite it? We had to go through that land use process, et cetera. And now we're here in design and engineering. We are constructing Twenty First Street, which is required infrastructure to access the site. So we're actively in construction. And we did receive two initial investments through the state legislature. And so as we're moving into twenty-twenty-six, we're sort of finalizing all of those components so that we can be construction-ready for twenty-twenty-seven. So again, this is just highlighting some of those milestones over the last year or so. This project has really, again, had quite a bit of momentum in the last couple of years. Again, thanks honestly to, to all the partners and folks that we have at the table. Without Deschutes County dedicating the land, without all the partners sort of helping us identify funding, without our state partners helping us identify what the role of this would be for them, et cetera. We, I don't think we'd be as far as we are now. So always love to highlight the work, great work that they're doing. And so what's ahead, we are finalizing our capital campaign or our resource development process for that emergency coordination center for Fa- and for Phase One. We have about twenty-five million for that and we need about ten million more. So we will be working, we're actually working with Representative Evans on the Spartacus Bill. And this is written into his bill as part of a bonding authority specifically to Core Three. It also identifies multiple sites across the state for this to be the model for, potentially to serve some of our communities that are, you know, more remote, I think, than even we are in terms of, you know, being removed from the DPSST in Salem area. We have, you know, fencing and site cleanup. Again, we're finalizing some of our construction and site prep to really be construction-ready. And we're working together on my favorite part, which is, you know, governance and operations. So not just we're building the thing, but how are we going to work together to do that? And that's, I think, something I'm really proud of. It's tough. It's tough stuff when you have twenty-four agencies. Again, all at varying degrees of ability, but it's, you know, the model is really a cost share among certain agencies that have said, yeah, we really want to invest in this and we want to help operate it. And then some long-term contracts with different organizations and then user fees. So we put together a business model that helps us understand how we would bring outside revenue. We surveyed different agencies from eastern Oregon and across the state. And it's definitely going to be used very, very well. So, and then finally, we're in conversation, again, with our state agencies about what does that investment and what does that role of the state and what is that future investment going to look like and partnership moving forward. And that is it for me. I just wanted to share, you know, we do have an executive council. Commissioner Tony DeBonne is our current chair. We also have two co-vice chairs. We typically have someone representing fire and someone representing police. Chief Blake was our most recent fire and he is leaving Jefferson County Fire. And so we are going to be recruiting for, for a new vice chair there. And then again, there's my contact. So again, always happy to follow up if you have questions or want to get coffee and learn more about what we're working on. And then also a plug for our website here, corethreecenter.org. If you just want to poke around, that's where you can find some, some information, like what I've included here, but also some of our site documents. It's usually where we try to provide updates on funding and our processes, et cetera. So with that, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Shelby.
Yeah.
Is Redmond the only Core Three site at this point planned for the state?
Yes. I'm not sure. So in terms of how we're participating is like, we're engaging and saying, here's what we would need to make this functional and here's what you might need for other sites around the state. But I don't know where they've actually had those initial conversations. So I don't know if they're actually already identified. I'm happy to look into that. But in terms of the, how they're rolling that out, Core Three is the model and the first site because we are the, the one and the only one that's sort of almost shovel-ready to be able to start building on. So.
I want to thank you for a clear explanation. I've heard about Core Three for several years. I've had other folks talk to me about it, but never really as clear the definition. I, I had a pretty good ten-thousand-foot elevation view of what you're going, we're going to be doing with the training facility and everything else. But there's no doubt in my mind that this is the best location statewide, central for what could potentially occur because I noticed that the, the federal staging area was Eugene Airport. And my understanding from the time I worked with disaster recovery there is that the Eugene Airport might have some water on the runways at that point in time from the dam failures upstream. So I think this is going to play a much more significant role than even you folks think should that event occur. Because I think everything in the Willamette Valley is going to be useless, at least for a period of time.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know if anyone's following the KTVZ seismic shift series, but there is new research that's coming out that's showing that the impacts are going to be massive and that, I, I mean, it's pretty grim to think about, but the surfaces might be down for months, some of them for years in particular areas. And so coastal communities in particular are prepping. How do we be resilient as a community or, you know, as sort of an islanding concept? And for us, it's like, yeah, how do we have the infrastructure to be able to sustain ongoing support for those communities? ongoing support for those communities, bringing whether it's bringing refugees from other areas in the state or again, maintaining that supply chain of resources from other areas and particularly through FEMA.
Will there be any housing there, dormitories for training, things like that? I've been to
Yeah.
A number of federal facilities for different
Yeah.
trainings and and the housing really does help to have it cheap, you know, and a cheap place to to stay and keep costs down.
Yeah.
Agencies.
Great question. So initially, initially, no, because of the land use, the specific use that we have for this. It's a it's a totally different ballgame if we start to bring in housing. And so we did not choose to do that because when we talked to folks, they said, well, you know, we'll throw down a cot, we'll we'll be able to, especially for training, like it's a an impact to the local economy if we stay at hotels, et cetera. That said, when we're getting to that emergency coordination piece, there is a component of the Spartacus bill that we're working on that would give us the authority to have housing on site for that occasion for folks. So whether it be trailers or whether it be like actual infrastructure, we just need that authority. And it sounds like the legislative path is is the one that we're exploring for that right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Right, anything else? All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I love your excitement, Shelby.
Yes, good. Thanks. Easy project.
All right. So we have one more big topic. And yeah, we're going to go, this workshop will go long.
But not because of that.
Gentlemen, are you prepared? The workshop goes longer?
Yes.
Because we're already kind of at time.
Minutes, so I could do two minutes.
Couple of minutes. Okay. All right.
Maybe even this might go fast. You never know.
That's true. Northwest Park Master Plan with Matt Martin. Take it away.
Thank you, Mayor Matthew Martin, City of Sisters Planning Division. I'm joined on Zoom by John Champlin with N V Five, our consultant on the project. Since we met with you in September, we've been hard at work with additional community outreach and refinement of the preferred conceptual design. And we're here tonight to to provide this iterative update and get some additional input from the council as we continue forward and developing the master plan. So with that, I will hand it off to John.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Sounds good.
All right. Great. Well, thank you, Council, for the opportunity to join you again tonight. It's really a pleasure to to be with you and be a part of this project. So I know we're over time. I will try my best to be brief. Wanted to quickly mention where we're at in the process. So as you as you are aware, we've we've had a pretty extensive public engagement on this project. To the point where we developed the three alternatives, which you all saw. We are now at the point where we have a draft preferred concept, a single one to to review this evening. Our next step, following your feedback and feedback from the Parks Board, which we we met with last week, is to finalize that design along with the cost estimate and present that to you in January. At which point we will move forward with our final master plan report for you to adopt later in the spring. Quickly wanted to to give an overview summary of the feedback that we received from from you, from the from the Parks Board and from the public at our open forum that was was held roughly about a month ago. Essentially, to summarize it, option A and option B were felt to be too much of an impact to the site. And option C rose to the top. A few of the reasons are it has a lighter footprint. It's a it's a better fit for the site, for the location, you know, on the highway there, there fronting the roundabout. It also had a nice mix of improvements. People really liked the nature themed playground, the bouldering idea. It, some of the feedback we received was that it needs to have better emergency access. So that's one of the things we considered. It needs to include a restroom in the larger facility, not not as a separate building. It needs to try to maintain as many of the existing trees as possible on site. That was really a priority that we heard from the public. And also no bocce. So. Oh, go ahead.
So specific.
Yeah. So, yeah, I should I should mention to feel free to jump in with any questions as we're going through this. You know, definitely keep it open conversation this evening. So based on that feedback and and conversations with staff, we have developed this draft preferred concept. So do want to reiterate that that this is a draft. It is still under development. And we're welcoming any and all comments and questions that, you know, can help impact the design moving forward. One thing that you will notice is that we have moved and and rotated the pavilion itself. So it's now up along Barclay Drive. It is the same size pavilion as as what we represented in option C. That's a 16,000 square foot open air portion of the building. Combining the restrooms into the keynote C enlarges that space. What's represented here is roughly 3,500 square feet and we we have a concept plan for that, which we'll review. Vehicular circulation now connects from canopy way, passes through the site and will connect down to old growth way. The the alignment of the parking is such to maintain an existing cluster of trees here on this on the east side of the site. Then there's a small cluster right here, which which we're maintaining and protecting in place. But as you can see, that that proximity to the building really creates a good proximity for emergency access and also maintenance access. In terms of pedestrian connections, we're we're really connecting at all of the the primary places where pedestrians might be walking to the site. But you will notice the the pathway network, circulation network really all is directed to the corner of the building. So that would be the building entrance right here, keynote I. That would that would really be kind of a heart of of the exterior of of the space and would be a nice entry plaza there. Some of the other improvements that we have carried forward are this idea of a nature play zone with an integrated fire watchtower concept. We're carrying forward the Three Sisters bouldering concept that was has been well received throughout. Also showing a sand volleyball pit. That's keynote F here. And that would be surrounded by just an informal irrigated lawn space. We also have a second irrigated lawn space up at the north side of the of the site. And that can act as kind of a breakout space for the building, but also nice proximity to the future food cart station. In addition to those improvements, we're locating picnic tables in the site. There's benches, obviously, you know, trash receptacles. We have two areas for bicycle parking. So in total, there'll be 16 total bike parking stalls. Finally, keynote H is the interpretive pathway. So just a natural path that would meander through the site. We have two two areas for that with interpretive signage opportunities. Keynote J is a vegetated buffer between the parking lot and the single family residential. We definitely heard back from the public that that is a desire. That is a roughly 30 foot vegetated buffer. That would include some existing trees, but also introducing new trees and understory plantings. Go ahead and shift forward to some character imagery. I think you've you've probably seen much of this, but just to kind of give a look and feel for what the what the improvements might might look like from a a wood structure pavilion, wintertime ice skating, summertime skating, sport courts, really multi-use and could be interchangeable, depending on programming and demand. Some of the nature play idea, bouldering, interpretive signage, site site furnishings. Quickly wanted to review our conceptual design for the architecture. So again, the the open air portion of the pavilion would be 16,000 square feet. That's plenty of space for, you know, two two full sized basketball courts, a mixture of basketball, volleyball, pickleball. Really could be multi-use and and that's the idea. The conditioned space would be roughly a total of 3,500 square feet. The entrance to the building, as noted, would be on on the kind of east or northeast end of of this area. And would be a flexible space, could be a spot for concessions and and ticketing if there's events going on. We have a rentals area, so thinking about skate rentals. Also, you know, sport equipment. If if somebody needs a basketball or a volleyball or a racket, opportunity there. And that is is really flexible in that the rentals would face the entrance and the pavilion. Concessions and ticketing would face the entrance and also the exterior. So that's an opportunity there for for a lot of flexibility. This entrance space would be, it could be open air to the to the pavilion space. Or it could be closed off where it's not necessarily open air. It's it's still conditioned. But we really like the idea of creating a visual connection. So making sure that it's visually open. Maybe it's it's a glass wall or a louvered wall or something like that that could be opened up, but definitely an opportunity to to draw people visually into that into that area.
John, I have a question.
Go ahead.
When you say open air, specifically referring to the pavilion and the multipurpose court, does that mean that there are not full walls around it to the outside as well? Or are you just referring to it not being heated and cooled? Or what does that exactly mean?
Yeah, it's it's still very conceptual. Our our idea is that this back wall, it's kind of the north is not directly up, but it would be the northwest wall could be a a solid wall, lots of, you know, the glass or plexiglass or there's there's different products, but open visually, but physically could be closed down. And then the end the end caps could be a mostly open air so that it's fully not conditioned. But in the wintertime, if, you know, temperatures are are super low, there's a lot of wind, having the ability to close that off. Maybe it's louvers or or you know, draw down doors or something to close that off would would be would be pretty nice. And so that's kind of the the idea.
Okay, thank you. I'm also thinking of it not just from weather, but from a noise standpoint. So, yeah, but thanks for that explanation.
Yeah, yeah, totally. And when when the weather's nice, we're also thinking there would be some sort of, you know, fencing along those ends. So it would be a secure facility with, you know, the opportunity for gates to come in and out for equipment, but also access for people. So the the middle of the of the kind of programmed architecture would be where the restrooms are located. And what you're seeing here is is a mixture of a few individual unisex restrooms, a couple of them have showers in addition to some communal women's and men's restrooms. We were trying to come up with some layouts that give the city and the flexibility multiple options for locking off. So perhaps it's a, you know, there's a there's an event going on, the outdoor door could be locked, so there's only access to the interior. Or vice versa. Maybe the the pavilion is closed down and you could still get public access through through the outside. We're also, I mean, this is all currently under development, but we're looking at, you know, what would it look like for a couple of unisex restrooms? Just dedicated for the park, so only outdoor access. But generally, the idea is is maximum flexibility for, you know, multiple uses indoor and outdoor. Facing the pavilion, and this would this would all be open air to the pavilion itself, would be a bank of day use lockers as well as drinking fountains. So a place for, you know, people to come and put their skates on and go about their their time there. And then on the left side, this is really going to be determined by final programming, but this is where, you know, the mechanical systems, the maintenance, the chillers, storage, that sort of thing would happen. So we're we're certainly, you know, reviewing that and we're going to be reviewing that with staff. And how's that? How that really wants to lay out? But this is about 1,000 square feet total. And again, that that's really kind of back of house usage there. Okay, so the big question everybody has has been asking, this is this is very fresh information. Rough order of magnitude cost estimate. So this is this is put together without the benefit of, you know, final design and detailed engineering or anything like that. And so just want to emphasize it it's not by any means final, but we're looking at both direct construction costs and indirect construction costs. We have baked in a sizable contingency into into the estimate as well as future expansion into the or sorry, future escalation into the soft costs there. In total, the design that we have shown is coming out to about 9.6, 9.7 million. It's worth noting that this is comparable to the previous cost estimate that was represented in the 2023 Parks Systems Master Plan, and that was at 10.4 million is what the estimate there was. So I know I was moving quickly. That that concludes my, you know, presentation for the evening. So I would open it up for for some questions and comments.
I have one comment. I have a question. I guess it's a question. The if you could go back to the overall at the beginning, just kind of the app. Thank you so much. Item D, the 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 place structure lookout tower, is that ADA accessible to get up there? And if it's not, I would highly recommend that we find a way to berm a ramp up on the backside of or something. I think you could do an elevator, which would be very, very expensive. For a lot less, you could probably berm something up or concrete something in the back. I just think that I think that's a must.
Yep, it is. It's it's a nonstarter for me.
Yeah, I'd really like the the lookout tower to be ADA accessible, the top part of it. And I know it's a big ask. You might have to sink it a little and, you know, do some do some big grading design and stuff, but I just I just think that we would. I just think that we would uh absolutely want want that.
Mm-hmm.
That's the only thing I have, otherwise, I, my personal uh thoughts are that we could phase this if we wanted to, and the pavilion's half the cost. Uh, and maybe we do the first part of just establishing the park and have this grass area that's going to be a future pavilion and make it, cut it into two pieces if we if we want to. Um, it would be kind of an easy way to do it, or we just bite the whole apple. But I think that at least there's a path forward if costs get a little too high. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of comments from the park board when they they saw this. Um, the one was, it really depends on what in the end we decide to do within the facility. Because all of that will drastically change, A, the size of the restrooms, and B, the type of staffing that might be necessary, whether or not you need rental space and those things. And that's all something that that we have time to discuss down the road. But one of them wanted to know, I mean, there was a discussion, should there be an indoor climbing wall? Uh, there was some talk about hosting small, small music venues within the space, nothing major that would be a big drop, but more locally. They usually, they talked about Austin, the city of Austin does some things like that, some bit smaller venues. Um, and then they also wanted to know, what would our contingency plans be if it had to be downsized? So a little bit smaller footprint and those things. And and then one last uh thing that I got thinking about in the night, i- and that is the sand volleyball pit. I'm I'm not a hundred percent sold on that primarily because you have it in a pine forest full of Doug firs and and not Doug firs, but the ponderosa pines, and if you see what a needle drop in the fall looks like around here when they shed one-third of their needles every year. Trying to keep needles out of a sand volleyball pit could be extremely difficult and very time-consuming for maintenance staff. And I don't know if I want to do a face plant and do a sand volleyball pit going for a a lob and be landing pine needles. Uh, they're kind of unpleasant to land in.
You could get your eye poked out.
Pardon?
You could get your eye poked out.
Yeah, like a BB gun. And uh, and also the fact that we do have a large housing development next door, which will have pets. Some of those pets will be feline in nature, and that's one heck of a sandbox or litter box, but which way you want to look at it. When I had them at schools, we had to cover them every night to keep the cats out. So just something we need to think about as we look about what we want to do, there's some nice things to do, but maybe ice rink isn't one, maybe it is, maybe sand volleyball isn't one, maybe it is, those are things to look at. But the, to me, I like the way this looks, and the the committee did too. They all liked the conceptual overlooked design, what actually goes into it. That's kind of up in the air, I guess.
Um, I do like the idea of a phased approach. Um, right now I do not have an appetite for a pavilion, um mostly because I don't I don't think we have a clear view into staffing and how it would run and what we would have in there. Um, I think uh doing it in a phased manner would um buy us some time. Um, and it also maybe just with the economy the way it is, I'm not ready to jump into a ten million dollar project, but you know, something smaller with the idea that we'll still have space to grow into. But that that's where I'm at, so.
Um, I I noticed that, and you brought this up, John, about the orientation of what we saw in uh, was that September meeting? That you had to turn the pavilion a bit and that area C, because it'll be bathrooms and maintenance rooms and so on, I'm assuming that's going to be a solid wall. Uh, right, right about where your mouse is, well, yeah, between the park and the bathrooms, like that wall, there you go. So that's going to be a solid wall. Um, it seems to me like this area C is just splitting this park in half. That if you were over there in D and E and F, um, you wouldn't even really be able to see into the pavilion because of this wall. So is there any thoughts around uh rotating that or putting that maybe on um the other side of the pavilion? Um, right there by uh G. Yeah, alongside where G is over there, is that a ability so that everything's open to the the park?
We, yeah, we we did look at, you know, how that configuration works. Um, the two things, um, the the function of as you come into into the the facility, uh, you really want to move along the, you know, the courts along the long side. And so um coming in uh at the end was um somewhat not ideal for that. I mean, you you, we could do it at the at the corner and have and have access come down. Um, but the proximity also for the restrooms to the, you know, the outdoor improvements, we liked that as opposed to, you know, putting it off on the other side or on the end. Um, when, so second, I guess my second response is, when we do get into final design, this this uh keynote C will be a lower uh form. Keynote B would be a quite a bit higher form, and you and you could really kind of think about having, you know, an open air um space between the roof of B and the roof of C. Um, that could be a, you know, a solid um a solid window or a series of windows, but um would definitely be, you know, designed in a way that would make it visually appealing from the interior of the park.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
There will also be enough to get that hard body here, especially if you weren't looking at the sessions and
And to uh perhaps have wit- windows that kind of look through, so that entry area could be glassed, and then the wall behind it could be glassed, so that you do have a view in, so it it takes up that hard surface down a little bit steer where the restrooms are. And I know there was some discussion, uh, Jackson could correct me here, but there wasn't really a need for a large uh facilities maintenance space because we do our maintenance by truck, not at on-site, so you wouldn't be storing mowers and things like that there. If we had an ice sheet, you'd probably have to have Zamboni, so I get to drive it if we have one, but I I think that uh you're gonna need extra space because I'm not very good at driving one of those. Um, so I I, but I hear what you said, I think it's a very good comment. I think we need to think about how you can bring the outside in and the inside out.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Um, and since we brought up phasing, and I'm sorry.
We brought up phasing, um, and I guess we would have to think about what are the bathroom facilities if we don't have the main building? So just keep that in mind, Chris, thank, or John, thank you.
Mm-hmm, good point.
I think in this process, you know, this started three, four years ago. Um, and in that time, uh, you know, our our city is continually changing, our options are are expanding. There's, you know, a UGB expansion hopefully coming relatively soon. And so I think when this project was started, it, you know, we were feeling very lucky, like we had this little piece of land, like, oh, we're gonna have a park, and now it's this idea, the city will hopefully be expanding soon. Um, not only is it, you're like, oh, we, there'll be parks and those expansions, uh, but that also gives us an opportunity to look at land, undeveloped land within the current city limits in a different light, I think, because because some of the stuff in the city, you know, that's undeveloped, you you, okay, well, we need that for housing because we need so much housing, but now it's like, well, if we have more housing, you know, and and then new expansion, for instance, then maybe some of this undeveloped stuff in other parts of the city can now maybe be a park or another use, so. Um, uh, so I, what I'm trying to say is that it doesn't, I think a couple of years ago, we wanted this park to check all the boxes, you know, for a park facility in open space, and and I don't think we need to look at it in that respect anymore. And I and I know that in this process, this this design's really great, it went on a diet, obviously, from our our last presentation, so thanks for for working on that, John. Um, and so, yeah, I I think I'm, you know, kind of at the same place Michael was at, in that um, I'm still not a hundred percent sold that a a pavilion or a facility like this needs to be at this location. There's some advantages and there's some significant disadvantages to this location for something like this. Um, and so, but what I like about this design is that uh, you know, it could just be um phased and, you know, keeping that corner of the property relatively undeveloped. You know, and then if we find another better place for a pavilion or something like this within the town, then we can do that, and then maybe utilize that space for something else, but um, oh, I know you went, oh, yeah. Um, so so, yeah, I don't think, yeah, right now I'm not horribly, yes, sold on on the pavilion being at this park moving forward, however, um what I I like what I see, I like that, yeah, exactly, it can be phased, and it has a lot of the facilities that a lot of community members were asking for. Um, and there's a lot of creativity, a lot, you know, uh, the neighbors um as well. So, so, yeah, I I I think, yeah, we, I'm, I um, yeah, I was pleasantly surprised, I was a little, you know, a little bit worried about what I was going to see, just just because of the iterations before, but but really
I mean, if we had ten million just sitting around, I say, yeah, let's fix, let's fix the little things we don't like and just go ahead and build it, sure. But, yeah, that's a, that's a big number, I agree.
And I think too that before we finalize exactly what might be within a building footprint and what that might look like, we have to have some real long discussions with the SPRD board.
Yes.
And and their administration, because we may build it, but we're not in the business of running those sorts of things, and I think they understand as do we that we would probably be looking at them, and and so we would want to take their expertise as to what will sell and be used. We might really like the idea of my favorite thing, the sand volleyball pit, but they, everybody may say, no, not a good idea. I mean, so that's that's kind of where we are too. But I like what, I, this was a much better design than what we saw in the the previous iteration, so thank you very much.
Yeah, and I think there's more conversation needed around, it's just, if we want to stick with the ice rink and and a concept is regulation size or small size, I think there's, there's a a big discussion that to be had there. And, you know, if a regulation size can be put somewhere else in the community, um, then I, that would probably be a better option, but I don't know where that is right now.
I I just wanted to share a comment by Kellen Klein the other day when we were at the Children's Pop-Up Museum about these pop-up ice rinks. Oh, that sounds pretty fun and pretty cool, and you could always bring something like that in if we had a space. And just try it out, see how the community responds to it if we're limited in in space. Um, so I thought that was kind of a cool idea too, and I I also want to make sure we don't leave out Public Works input on something like this, right?
Can I ask a question about those?
Accommodating sometimes, and I think we need to ask them sometimes, so it, they can handle.
Can I ask a question about a pop-up ice rink? Is that real ice, though?
Yes.
Is it? Oh, great.
They have both that or
I'm interested in hearing more about that.
Yeah.
Let's do coffee.
Okay. If you look online, you can actually find several companies that provide them, either rentals or will sell you one. Uh, and some are have a synthetic surface, but there are some that make that make them with refrigerated, make ice and uh, it work well.
Would would there be value in this property and maybe not this giant, maybe not this size of footprint, but having just like a concrete slab there, would that? Because, you know, that could be a, you know, basketball court or some sort of court in in the summertime, but then would that accommodate? Because I don't know what you're talking about, so would that accommodate what you guys are talking about, or we're?
Yeah, it just needs a flat surface.
Okay.
I think the real question becomes the the variability of outdoor temperatures we have here in the wintertime where we can have twenty, ten, fifty, twenty-degree evenings and forty-five-degree days with strong sunshine. That could be a problem, one of the things we discussed on the idea if there was an ice sheet inside of that footprint was that we would have to have a need to somehow close the building up in the winter to ensure that the ice sheet, we weren't spending a a large amount of money to keep the ice frozen.
Okay, do you have what you need?
Some great input, uh, I appreciate that, appreciate your presentation, John. I so from the uh the accessibility of facilities to the phased approach, to um temporary facilities in the interim are all great suggestions that uh we could continue to explore. Um, uh, coordination with um Public Works, we do engage with Paul and Jackson on a regular basis as part of the project team, so their their voices at the table. And um as for programming and coordination with SPRD, um, it's a great uh segue into, we have a a planned meeting on December tenth, a joint meeting between uh their board and city council to uh further um discuss this project and those programming. And and I'd like to do one more comment to um Councilor Pellerin's idea of, um, you know, the building moving or whatever. I don't, I think that has a lot of merit, but I think one way you might be able to do it is to break the uh eastern half, which is just storage and stuff, and maybe break that away from so it's not such a long building, and maybe that creates opportunity for vision and putting those facilities maybe around the corner towards G or something else and having space between them. Um, I don't know if that's good for the programming or not, but I'm not the designer, so I'll let the designer answer those questions when he, when they get back on the board, but I really like that idea. Interesting. Great, thank you. And John, any other closing remarks before we finish?
No, I I think we've pretty well covered it, Matt, I, we had a few uh questions, um, but I think the you know, the councils really addressed most of them, so um, I think we're in good shape.
All right, all right, well, thank, thank you very much, John, and thank you very much, Matt.
Thank you.
Right, I will, I will close this workshop and we will convene for the regular city council meeting at seven oh five. Thank you for your patience.
I will.
All right, I'd like to call to order the November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five regular city council meeting. Thank you for your patience. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, roll call please.
Mayor Letts.
Here.
Council President McDougal.
Here.
Counselor Preeden.
Aye.
Counselor Ross.
Here.
Counselor Pellerin.
Here.
Right, we have a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
In a second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, uh, do we have any visitor communication today?
Yes, uh, Mark Dickens.
Uh, Mark Dickens, one thirty-three East Black Crater Avenue here in Sisters. Uh, council members, mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, just want to touch on something real quickly, uh, that's kind of related to what was discussed earlier tonight in your workshop. Uh, another uh project uh that the city is um in the process of doing. I attended the little ceremony a few days ago and was um excited, but somewhat disappointed by what I saw out there at this transportation hub, and I'm not going to get into it a whole lot tonight, but I'm hoping I can provide some suggestions and some things that are constructive. I saw what I considered to be um some very uh poor uh design flaws, engineering, and just the execution of the building. Here's a quick example, the roof over the entrance of the bathrooms, if you notice where the roof stops, comes down right over the center of the walkway. Um, the handicap parking's over a hundred and fifty feet away from this bathroom building, you actually have to cross the the driveway, the road where the buses come through. Um, the water, the snow will come right down on this walkway. This was just one of many things that I just observed in the few minutes that I was there. I'll take some time to write some comments and suggestions uh on the back and turn these in. But I would hope that the city um really exercises some strong oversight in its contractors and its even its own departments as to who is doing these things. Um, there's just some some really poor decisions made on this project, and I know this is another one of those things that's supposed to go on with multiple phases, up to four million dollars. So I would hope the city would maybe go back and reevaluate this and look at how the money's being spent before you consider going off and spending another ten million dollars. Onto my issue of my property, um, that I've been here speaking about. I hope these documents are making the way to city council. Um, this is the land use approval on my property in April of two thousand eight. Uh, this is a site map that was proved uh submitted, received by the city of Sisters, August of two thousand eight. This was part of the application for the permit for the new replacement dwelling, the new residence. You'll see where it says new garage, residence, existing residence, and existing cottage. This was a replacement dwelling, this building was removed, and this was the new one that was built, the manufactured house was was retained. This was approved in two thousand eight, nine. Um, and in two thousand twenty-five, for reasons unknown, your staff decided to reinterpret all this approval process. Um, I would not assume that any I would not assume that anything that you're being told from your city manager or your staff is complete or accurate. The reason I say that is none of them were here during this time period when all this was going on. So none of them have firsthand information. And I can see where there's some confusion, but I think the documents speak for themselves and these are what I'm going to expect the city to honor. Your new director that took over from Patrick Davenport, he reviewed the property in, I think, two thousand nineteen, twenty and found no zoning code violations whatsoever. So I'm not sure why the city would feel the need some seventeen years later to try to come and reevaluate the building. But just to give you a quick example, the city manager stated that the prior owner was to abandon one of the two dwellings on the property and expand the remaining existing residence. Well, you can't expand it. The existing residence is a manufactured house. The previous second accessory dwelling unit was removed in the process and not relocated. Well, that's completely inaccurate because the map that was submitted for the permit clearly shows that this was the existing cottage that was removed and it was relocated. The new building was constructed here. And this needs to be recognized as a residence, as a dwelling unit, as it was permitted for. And I just found out this last week that apparently the approved drawings that the city has had in their possession since two thousand and nine have now gone missing. The plans that I verified and came and looked at, at the counter in two thousand sixteen, when I bought the property as part of my due diligence, now mysteriously are missing. So I'm not sure what to make of it. I don't know if this is just being prompted by the county and some retaliatory vindictive fashion by this building official. Maybe he took them. I have no idea. But I have the survey map. I have all the documentation that shows. So again, there's two issues here because there's two buildings on my property. This specifically I'm talking about is what relates to the city. And this is your responsibility to sort this out. Again, I hate to keep saying this, but if this is not dealt with and I have the documents to support it, I am going to have to initiate a lawsuit against the city and the county to resolve this. I've been trying to sell my property for years. I've had multiple buyers, written offers. And every time they've had to back out because they come down here and somebody like one of your planners, Emmy Shoup, runs them off and gives them all kinds of in- inaccurate information. And this just cannot continue to go on. So please take the time to read the documents to verify. I will extend my invitation again to come in and sit down and meet with anybody here at the city and provide, provide copies to all of this. So this can, can be resolved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
If you're on Zoom and would like to participate in visitor communication, please raise your hand. There are none.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have a presentation from Treehouse Therapies. You can.
Welcome to sit there or up here.
Either spots fine, whatever you're comfortable with.
You can share yours.
Good evening. Thank you for the patience there. I'm Sean Diaz and a resident of Sisters and the, the new director of the Aspen Clinic and Program over at the Sisters Clinic Center. It's a new clinic, pediatric therapy clinic for Treehouse Therapies. And so I am coming first of all to give an update on the progress of this clinic. And foremost, to say thank you for all the work that you did to make that happen. Over the past year, there were work done to change the city code to allow a health center in their health clinic. And so I wanted to report and let you know what, what's happening with that. Treehouse Therapies has been in business in Central Oregon as a nonprofit pediatric therapies clinic or organization since two thousand thirteen, providing occupational therapy, behavioral health, physical therapy, and additional services in now six clinics across. And over the most recent years, we're seeing some trends that for occupational therapy, they were starting to see more fever issues. That the work that was being done with clients was going for well over a year. There was difficulty carrying home what was done in therapy with the caregivers. And then this extended time, which was good work with the, the children and families made difficult for other families to get services. Had a waiting list of over five hundred. Waiting for some kind of services. And then the complexity of cases. With that, we also learned that caregivers, parents, those who are caring need more support and skills than just a, a one hour a week treatment session with the kid. That also with some, uh, some clinicians started working together, co-treating with behavioral health and occupational therapy scene. There was overlap and from each of the disciplines could really maximize the work done. And then again, needing to provide families who felt were in crisis or just didn't know what to do, some really clear skills and supports help stabilize their family, feel more confident and improve their relationship with their kid. And so out of that, the Aspen program, which stands for Adventures in Sensory Processing and Emotional was born. And it has become a reality here in Sisters, in the Sisters. I personally have lived in Sisters for eighteen years. I was a school counselor in the element, old elementary school when I first moved here. So this is like a full circle moment. And to be able to see this kind of service provided for sisters' families and the region, the broader region, it's really exciting for me and that work. And so we basically families are identified to be a part of this program. This is what they expect. They get to work with a co-treatment team of behavioral health and occupational therapists. They get specific treatment calls based on their individual needs founded in the skills of TBT, which is a very research-based effective treatment. And it focuses on training parents to get the skills to support. This is an intensive program for six to seven months. They meet once weekly in the clinic, once weekly. Telehealth for the parents to support their skills and what's going on for them. And they have a monthly group for the caregivers, children, additional coaching.
BH, BTH dash C is? BTH? Well, I might, it went away.
Oh, BH, yeah, sorry. Behavioral health. I'm sorry. Behavioral health, clinician and then OT, occupational therapist.
Okay, that's, so that's what the D, BT dash C.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Di- dialectical behavioral there.
Thank you.
For children.
Can you say that again, please?
Dialectical.
Dialectical.
Yes. The idea that two things, opposing things can exist at the same time. And the acceptance of that is part of how we bring about change. So that's real rough.
That, that was helpful to have. I recognize the others, but not.
Yes. Um, thank you for that. I know you use these acronyms so often. You just little right by them. So our outcomes with this program are that we are working towards an increase in skills for the client, the children and the parent caregivers to regulate emotions. Increase in skills to guide the caregivers and creating a validating environment that is safe for their child. Increase in confidence of the caregiver to have a better and more effective relationship. And then increase in skills for the child to learn how to identify, communicate and regulate their emotions in whatever setting they're at. And then reduction in the frequency, intensity and duration of these adaptive behaviors. And then by the end of the program, this is meant to be stabilizing and then transition to what they need next, back to individual therapy, a different program, maybe sort of just less frequent check-ins. So they're not just in the program and left, but we develop a transition. These are also a couple of our pictures of the new clinic spaces, which I will give you more information. So we have a little before and after to show you what's been done. So this is to the right of the main entrance of the county center. This has been a special ed room, a counselor room, a Title I reading room. And this is what it looked like in August, started work. What's that?
That's sad right there.
Yeah.
Let's see it. All right.
So this on the left is our new waiting room where families wait, come in. And then on the right is the conference office room. So we have a conference table for our parent groups. And then we don't have a receptionist yet. You probably will see me if you walk in the door, but, um, and then going off of our treehouse in our Sisters Country theme, we put up a, a cedar fence barrier just as a a way to to divide up that space. So again, here's a couple of the rooms before, and then the one on the right in progress. And then these are the entrance. So we've remodeled four rooms and they each are treatment room. And so this is looking into it. They're named by trees. So we have Ponderosa Room, Aspen, Alder and Juniper. And these are a couple of examples of the treatment structures and rooms available. And these, I mean, these rooms were perfect. They had the space. We've remodeled so that they have a smaller room for treatment and the larger structures for activities, physical, their occupational therapists do. And it has the office. So this treatment is done with the families. The parents don't drop their kids. They're here, working with the therapists. They can observe or since there's two therapists, they can each spend time with the parents. So that's been really exciting and effective. Really quickly on our first cohort, we have twenty-one families working with four treatment teams. Twenty percent are in Sisters families. Eighty percent are driving from Redmond Bend and as far as Primeville, a couple of families driving over an hour to come once a week. Clients, uh, our youngest is four point, uh, four and a half up to eleven years old and then the gender difference for grouping. Right now seventy-six percent have OHP. And then these are some of the diagnoses that our clients are having with. Anxiety, ADHD, adjustment disorder, which is essentially if there's some sort of, could be traumatic or change or significant event. You can get a diagnosis, adjustment disorder. Those are the effect that can have. And then trauma. And then we also received a grant from the City of Sisters, which allowed us to purchase gas cards to help these families who are traveling. And so right now we have ten gas cards out and that's, and then more are going. So that's really helped during difficult times. And we are already starting to promote, recruit, spread the word and evaluate for our next cohort, which will start in March with another four groups. And we're continuing to look to hire more staff so we can build as we have more. So I, there's a referral process, but I know I'm out of time. So there's contact information that's shared of how people can refer. And I know already I've networked with our fan program, our schools, other clinicians, Ozea Medical, St. Charles. And so just grateful to be here and thank you again for your support.
So some of your youth, school age in particular.
Yes.
So they're working probably in, within the school system with special needs.
Yep.
Advocates and or psychologists and or whatever.
Yeah. So some of our kids are in special education, have an IEP or five or four. Some are in behavior support classes or working with the Shute County programs. If they are involved with other therapy services, they take a break from that so they participate in this. But then we, we've set up that they will return.
So when you have someone who's in your therapy program who's currently within the school district system, you work with those folks in the schools also to identify needs. And so they're aware what methodologies you're using and, and how they don't undo some of what you do unintentionally?
Yeah. And actually we're learning from them. They, they see these kids every day. So they many have behavior programs. So we're definitely collaborating and releasing the information. I forgive her. Yeah, super important.
I, I appreciate the work. I was involved with that in my career. So I appreciate it very much. All right.
What's the oldest age?
So right now our oldest is eleven, but we, we, we've said somewhere around five to twelve. But I will kind of see how it grows. I know there's that's kind of the nature. A school age, yeah.
Thank you.
I would like to encourage you, uh, next year to go for another community grant in July. I think reminders probably go out in mid-spring sometimes for the upcoming program. And we'd love to be able to help out again if you have a need.
Yes, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
It's what you're doing.
Yes.
It's not easy work.
Yeah, we're, I think we're really happy we could help. Obviously, you know, we sort of caused a problem to begin with. So we in the greater sense of, you know, code that we didn't write, but yeah, this, this was, uh, we wanted to get this done as fast as we could and, and had a couple bumps, but, but we got there and we're really happy that, that you're there.
We're rolling.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Hey, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The only thing on the consent agenda was the minutes, uh, from our November fifth workshop and regular meeting. All right. Now we're on to council business and this will be ordinance five, four, five, building hardening. And Matt Martin will walk us through this and I will open the public hearing.
It looks like you brought a cheering section tonight, Pat.
Co- coordinated.
Collaborators in attendance tonight.
There's obviously no fire at the current moment. Cause they're all here.
Bear with me while I get set up here. Matthew Martin, City of Sisters, uh, planning, um, here as introduced by the mayor. Uh, a public hearing on ordinance for, excuse me, five, four, five, that'd be local adoption of Oregon residential specialty code section R three twenty-seven. Uh, building hardening, um, for residential structures. Um, I do want to acknowledge, uh, Krista Appleby in attendance. She's assistant building official for Deschutes County Building Safety Division. She's been a, a critical partner and will continue to be through the implementation, through the development and the implementation of the, this code provision as they serve as the, the building authority, uh, for City of Sisters. And also want to acknowledge the continued and ongoing support by, um, Sisters Camp Sherman Fire District, uh, through all of the efforts to, uh, build a more resilient community and address wildfire mitigation and the, the different efforts that we've taken through, uh, community education, adoption of defensible space standards. And now, um, building code provisions. So for a brief presentation, just give you a background of how we've gotten here today. And a brief summary of building hardening and the provisions of R three twenty-seven and the, the substance of the, the ordinance before you. I do want to note that we will be discussing a, a minor revision, uh, to the ordinance as it relates to some cleanup work as we transferred from City of Sisters to Deschutes County for that building authority. And I just wanted to provide some explicit language there that we'll discuss. Again, uh, this is a, a Um, again, uh, this is a culmination of a long effort and a continued effort to build a more wildfire uh resilient and address uh those uh impacts through wildfire mitigation. Uh, this is one of those steps through adoption of building hardening code in the municipal code. Uh, in particular, R three twenty-seven is directed at uh residential structures. Um, we've discussed this uh over a a few years, but more explicitly, R three twenty-seven in workshops earlier this year in July and then earlier this month. Um, to prepare for tonight's public hearing, where we um discussed in detail what building hardening was, what the provisions of R three twenty-seven were and the necessary steps that were uh uh required at the state level to provide this opportunity that we're presenting to you today for that local adoption. But quick, what is building harding? It's creating a more fire resistant structure through the building practices and use of fire resistant materials. So uh that's from the top to the bottom, from roofing ventilation at the attic or the foundation, the gutters, exterior walls, window, uh construction and those walking surfaces. Not to get into the details, but this is considering a more fire resistant materials and um and higher standards to reduce um uh the potential for fire um penetration into those um those cavities, the attic and the 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 foundation. The ordinance itself is limited in the 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 verbiage uh because the the adoption is um by reference to the state building code. The reference allows to uh automatically adopt any uh updates to that building code as they are periodically done. Uh, one of the requirements in the building code was to the opportunity for local adoption required that that local entity, the municipality, city uh to adopt it in whole or it's in entirety. So you couldn't uh pick from a menu of options, but you were required to adopt it in its entirety. And at the direction of uh city council, in recognition of the the fire risk, wildfire risk through the community as a whole, the ordinance would apply to the entirety of the city limits of Sisters currently or where expanded in the future. And as discussed at the prior workshop, the effective date would be upon thirty days with a a phase in period with mandatory compliance on April one of twenty twenty-six. Uh, that would provide an opportunity for any projects that are currently in design to be completed, complete that design and and submittal for building permit. And provide a uh opportunity for education to the building community and just a a a chance to be get acquainted with these code provisions before they go into effect. There's a significance of the April one date in that that coincides with regular updates to the building code and their mandatory compliance deadline or date. Uh, so it's a a timeline and a date that the building community is already familiar with. As for the revision, I originally noted that uh Deschutes County provides building services and serves as the building authority and the building official for City of Sisters. And that's been a relationship and authorities uh that's been in place since twenty sixteen. Um, our our code was not updated at that time to reflect that uh change in in authority and relationship. So we saw this as an opportunity while we had the code open to provide an update to the code. Original uh draft uh included the language on the slide that said City of Sisters or Designee will enforce the code and applicable rules. Uh, and in further communication, since that was drafted and working with the the Building Safety Division, found that that did not provide the necessary um specificity or um explicit uh description of what the authority and who was the authority in this case. So uh in that collaboration with the the Building Safety Division crafted the the language um that has been revised and is presented for your consideration as part of this ordinance. Uh, again, acknowledges Deschutes County as the building agency having jurisdiction for the City of Sisters will administer these codes. So next steps for the the council is to consider um uh closing the, there's a a menu of options to moving forward, to close the public hearing in record and and deliberate to a decision, continue the public hearing. Um, or um close the public hearing and schedule deliberations to another date. So I'll leave it at that. Happy to answer any questions I can. And um, thank you.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Matt?
I have one clarification question that because the county does our permitting. My understanding is the county also has to adopt R three twenty-seven as well.
Not in this, in this instance, this is a, the City of Sisters is the is the jurisdiction or municipality adopting the the R three twenty-seven. So it'll only apply to City of Sisters. Uh, if Deschutes County through their, as a municipality, choose to adopt separately R three twenty-seven, that'd be a separate process handled by that um jurisdiction.
Okay.
That's a good question. I was wondering the same thing.
Well, I had heard that as well. So I, yeah, I wanted to clarify it, so.
Could I ask the count, um Krista, a question? Do you mind coming up for a second? I'm sorry. Uh, because it relates to this too, and I was gonna wait. I didn't know if this is the right spot, but it might as well now. Um, you've been part of this process, obviously, and you know that our three twenty-sevens coming to Sisters most likely, depending on the vote. Um, do you have any um worries about the county, um, you know, enforcing and administering this code? Uh, when it's not being used by anybody else? So you you guys feel fairly confident that this is something that's going to be easy for you guys to do?
Uh, yes. Good evening, Krista Appleby.
Thank you.
Deschutes County Assistant Building Official.
I appreciate you that.
Sure. Um, we've been administering some of R three twenty-seven when rural ADUs in the county were allowed and required at the time to have fire hardening. So our staff is quite familiar with uh what's will be required.
Okay, I knew that answer, but I wanted to. Yeah.
You keep me up.
No, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
And and expanding on that a bit further too, is that uh we have this ongoing and existing relationship with the Deschutes County Building Safety Division. And so there's, there's already that understanding of and recognition of permits that are specific to City of Sisters versus those that may be outside of the city limits. So they'll they'll uh be able to and in position already to recognize, oh, this is a City of Sisters permit, therefore R three twenty-seven is applies.
Thank you. And a lot of people ask us once in a while, how come you don't have, you know, administer your own building codes and have your own building department? And one of the reasons is they're already in the business of doing it. We would have to add a lot of staff and a lot of budgeting for that kind of stuff. And honestly, we believe, at least I do, and most people in this room, believe that this relationship is working very well and we appreciate the um the collaboration that we do to get this thing done for buildings in our community. So thank you.
You're welcome.
And and I would say that as a user of your services, was I found everybody to be very um cordial, helpful down at at the office. So uh unlike I'd heard, oh, you but now it's not that way at all. They're really good people down there. So you you have a good crew.
Thank you. I'll take that message back.
Thank you. I agree with that. That's all I have.
I, the only comment I have is on the revision, and I appreciate the clarity that it provides over what the original language did not provide. Designee, in light of some folks who might want to question whether or not we are able to do some of these things, is not descriptive enough. Especially if someone walks in down at the county and says, you can't tell me to do that. Well, then, how do I know you're the designee? So thank you for that clarity.
All right, I will um, just to kind of stay on track here, I'm going to ask for public comments. We can kind of circle back to discussion. So I always, yeah, that was my fault. Okay, we do not have any public comments on this topic. So I'm going to close the public hearing. And discuss a little more. Are there any more questions or?
What I said before.
Yeah.
I would assume by the lack of public comment by some of the fire personnel in this room that they, that they're approving quietly.
I think they're falling asleep.
Yeah, probably. No, it's okay. I mean.
Yeah, you're welcome to. I can re, I can reopen a public hearing. You can come on up. We're happy to hear from you.
Yeah.
Six twenty South Maple. As part of a red that is within the city. Um, I'm extremely proud of the work that the city has done on the defensible space. This is the next um part or piece of that that encompasses everything that we're looking at. Without this, as you seen from flat, the flat fire, different houses that made it, didn't make it. From there, this is, this is an integral piece of what we're trying to do to protect everything. And without that, we're just gonna, it's gonna come up later. Because I think it's very important, as for being in my business and a contractor for years, the two to eleven percent that you're looking at, I think is a good investment on the front side of what it could potentially be on the backside. So I think what you're doing, I commend you guys for doing this. Thank you very much.
We don't want a burnt backside.
No.
Thank you, Chief Prior. All right, I will close the public hearing again. Play fast and loose up here.
I, I, I would like to say one more thing if I could, just a little bit uh before we get to a vote, but um uh I have heard from other design professionals, there are some concerns, of course, of what we're doing here. Um, there are some temper glass requirements and some of the glazing. Um, the covering of gutters uh adds a little more cost. Obviously, class A roof, that's not really that big a deal because we've been doing mostly class A for a number of years. So it's not really a thing. Um, I have heard uh and read a little bit about the deck requirements. Uh, there is a provision in R three twenty-seven that decks need to be fire hardened as much as the house. And so that's going to create a little bit of confusion for sure about what heavy timbers are okay and smaller pieces aren't okay, such as decorative trims, things like that. So we're gonna uh as a, as a design and building community, we are going to have some challenges on this and it's definitely going to add a little bit of cost. But I think when we realize that if one house goes, they may all go. But this is super important, as the chief said, and I think most people in the building industry and the design industry are willing to pay that little bit of price because we are a special community. We're very close together here in our little town and uh it, we just don't want it to happen again. Um, flat fire was enough, that was close enough. Let's go over the next twenty years and not have anything be that close and this will definitely help. That's my comment. Thank you.
And uh one, Council President, I appreciate that comment actually because I have been struggling with the April first date because there's a side of me that says I want it to take effect tomorrow. You know, I don't want another house to go up in town that doesn't, but I understand why. I mean, it's, it's and I think you've explained it for me quite well too. It it is going to take time for some of our folks out there in the building trades and the design professionals to be able to to really work this in and explain it to their clients. So as much as I hate April first waiting that long, I think I understand why.
I had a fellow design professional come up to me right before the meeting, uh before the workshop and said, I'm designing a house right now. How how much time do I have? I said, well, you, I think we're pushing it out about six months. So um it's just in our industry, uh it's very common to do things on certain dates. Um, there's a lot of July one dates for stuff and there's a lot of April one dates for code. And I think that we're following a very prescriptive manner, which I think is a very good idea. It just keeps it on a level with other changes. So the people in the industry have a little time to adjust to it. And again, if it was fire season, if we were doing this in June, I'd say, hey, this may be an emergency and maybe we consider uh shortening that time span. But I think because it's over the winter, I think we're, I think we're just fine.
Well, I I attended the rooftops to ridge tops uh fire mitigation conference last week with I think half the people in this room at some point. Um, and I'll, I can speak to it later, but uh something that stuck out in my mind was uh was in a that last session that that Krista and I were in. And we were it was kind of like speed dating. We're seeing all these different presentations around the room and and you know, one was about, you know, I think R three twenty-seven and and there was a woman in in our group that had mentioned, kind of standing next to me and I overheard her talking to her, her colleague about, she's like, well, I don't, you know, what are these additional costs? And you know, and I leaned over and I said, well, you know, it's the numbers we're using is two to eleven percent. That's based on a study out of Southern California. So, you know, give or take those numbers. And she's, she's like, oh, that's not what we're seeing. She's like um, and I don't know where she was from, but she clearly was from somewhere that had, was probably a victim of the twenty twenty fires, right? That's where they were trying to rebuild and rebuild to code. So I was thinking maybe Southern Oregon. And you know, she's like, well, it's just, I mean, the rebuilding costs are so much more, you know, and I was, you know, and I was a little curious, but then she's like, well, you know, it's, it's the the grants, the federal grants. And I was like, oh, yeah, you know, all the stipulations of, you know, the Buy America and and and, you know, the other, the rules in there, which are well intentioned, but have a tendency to just jack up the price of the house exponentially. And it was just another sign to me and to point to Chief Prior earlier, like, you know, dollars we can spend upfront will save hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, in in rebuilding costs, you know, it's, it's um and not, not a lot of people are out there saying like, oh, I don't care if my house burns because FEMA will come rebuild it or, you know, or insurance will, but it's it's never ever that easy. And it's always so much more expensive and and the well meaning grants just have a tendency to jack up that cro, that cost. And so um, yeah, any dollar spent upfront is is gonna pay dividends, you know, down the road, I truly believe. So um, lesson learned, you know, from unfortunately other Oregonians who going through this right now. Anybody else? Comments, questions? Okay. Uh, so I will ask for a motion to read by title only.
I move to have the city manager read ordinance number five four five as revised by title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Um a voice vote to be read by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. City Manager?
Okay, here's first the revision, uh revision to the final sentence of Sisters Municipal Code, section fifteen oh five oh one oh, to read Deschutes County Building Safety Division as the building agency having jurisdiction for the City of Sisters will administer this code and applicable rules. Title of ordinance five four five, an ordinance of the City of Sisters amending Sisters Municipal Code, chapter fifteen, buildings and construction to adopt Oregon Residential Specialty Code, section R three twenty-seven.
All right, do I have a motion to approve and adopt the ordinance? I move to approve and adopt ordinance number five four five as revised.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call vote this time.
Mayor Lutz?
Aye.
Council President McDougal?
Aye.
Counselor Breeden?
Aye.
Counselor Ross?
Aye.
Counselor Pellerin?
Aye.
All right, five ayes and no nays, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, and
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for the community and. I think definitely Ashland and I heard maybe Medford and Grants Pass have.
Because it was before the
Yeah.
legislation, so I don't.
I think so. But yeah, otherwise.
You're gonna go home and write a blog post?
Yeah.
All right.
I'll vlog, yeah.
Second pager, citing. Okay, other business.
I've, I've never.
What's, oh, okay, we have a couple more, couple more things here before we can wrap up. Response to prior meeting, public comments. Jordan Wheeler?
Uh, I will respond to Mr. Dickens by email.
Okay.
And just for the council's information about building permits um themselves and the retention schedule on that, it's a two-year retention schedule for residential building permits. So um after that, they get destroyed. We just, we don't hold uh residential building permits for longer than two years. That's standard practice.
At the city or at the county or both?
Well, at the city, definitely. I imagine a both.
Okay.
Oregon Public Records law. Um, so staff updates?
Just when you reply to Mr. Dickens, would you inform him that the building was built by the Forest Service fifty fricking years ago?
Uh, you're referring to the gateway park structures? We did paint them this year. We did paint, but and dark sky lighting.
I didn't want to engage. I didn't want to engage, so I didn't say.
Okay, strap in, we got staff updates.
Aye.
All right. First of all, we had the partnership on House Assist met on November twelfth. So another great meeting last week, continuing to get updates and share, you know, progress reports. One of the things that the group is gonna be kind of moving towards is more of an every other month model. And one thing that the group is interested in is inviting other guests as part of like an education process, but also help inform our work as we're working on things like safe parking regulations. So we'll start having more guest speakers and others to bring into the, the big tent here in Sisters to kind of help, you know, some best practices and, and learn what we could do here and implement interaction plan. Thank you, councilors, for attending the open house on the signage master plan last week. And we'll continue to work on that project. The Destination by Design team was actually here in town. I think some of you got to meet them as they did stakeholder interviews in the open house. We were planning on putting out a community survey next week about signage, what are feelings about signage? Where should go, design considerations, et cetera. Last weekend was the conversation with council at the Children's Museum pop-up and all our councilors kind of do the update on that. I'll just say that I thought it was great, a little pop-up there. Be great to have a Children's Museum in Central Oregon and I appreciate C four C and Kellen working on, continuing to bring that, that group back. I, I heard from today that the, the pop-up thought Sisters is a great venue. They actually get more people attending than like in Bend. So great for us to have those little opportunities and, and yeah, again, thanks to C four C for putting that together and organizing that and hopefully they keep up the momentum. Calendar things for your consideration, you have the board interviews for our advisory board and committees scheduled for Monday, November twenty fourth. We have positions open on the Parks Board and Public Works, and then there's one open seat on the Budget Committee. So you have about three applicants for the Parks Board and, and Public Works positions and then a couple that have applied for the Budget Committee. And let's see, other upcoming events, we have the volunteer appreciation event on December second and that's at the Balfrey with our board of commissioners members. So please RSVP, just so we have an accurate head count for that.
Is that a plus one event that we're, nope, okay, no. Just wondering.
We could consider that future years, you know.
Planning commission, if you want, you know.
I will be, I'll be a neighbor who attends, so you could, you could find name badge.
Very, yeah. Okay, and then November twenty ninth, coming right up. We have the Holiday Palooza Parade and Tree Lighting. I think the festivities kick off at three thirty parade and then the tree lighting, lots of parades over there at First Street Park. Always a fun affair. Let me jump down, give you some Public Works updates. Jackson's been working on Dark Skies, what do we call it, the phase two for public lighting, city facilities. And right now, we're, we're in the process of getting our fixtures for public restrooms changed out. I think there's eleven of them that are on order, so that should happen pretty fast. So again, doing our part, that's a council goal to work on public facilities. Speaking of lighting, you've seen the holiday lights go up, crews putting those up or a contractor. And so you'll see those continue to go up. I think there's a few trees that need to be troubleshooted for modifications, but otherwise it's already starting to be festive here, pre Thanksgiving. Getting darker, but it's also getting lighter, which is okay. Roundabout landscaping, you've probably seen some stuff happening out there. They are starting to do the excavation, which I think they're just about complete. And then you've probably seen some topsoil starting to be put down, so yeah, it's happening, starting to get some activity out there. You also may have noticed that on the other side of the fence, the park, while the grass is not in use and you'll hear an update from SBRD, because they're still working on getting that set this season before they kind of open up for activities in the spring, but the pickleball courts are open and already they've been pretty active as we've had this pretty decent fall weather. So I know people are excited to get on those courts. And then another, I think, milestone for you guys to know as we head into December is that we're on track for getting the Adams Avenue Streetscape project out to bid in December. So yeah, believe it or not, that project could be starting up not too long after the new year. So yeah, pretty excited to have that on track. Plenty going on in community development, UGB, lots going on behind the scenes now that the council has given us direction on the preferred alternative. So they're gonna be meeting with Deschutes County as a pre-application meeting. Get to sit through one of those on the other end of the table, to kind of work through that process and prepare ourmittles. And I think we're shooting for late January for submitting that application. It's probably gonna, gonna be until mid twenty twenty six until it's actually in front of you as a public hearing for adoption. Application wise, slow but steady, building permits in the sunset. Meadows and Woodlands continue to kind of come in on phase three for the Woodlands. You know, that's been plotted, you've seen Sisters Park Drive now with the connection there with the new crosswalk. We also are getting close to having the Crosscut Warming Hut project approved. So that would be that commercial development there in the Woodlands by the Northwest Park, which we're looking at today. A couple of things that have happened in the last couple of weeks, too, with the wildfire mitigation group. You also heard the updates from that a few weeks ago, but the Community Wildfire Protection Plan and Natural Hazards Mitigation Plans are both being worked on for Sisters Country. So I know planning staff has been involved with those efforts and also a few councilors too attending those meetings. And then I know Scott and I have met about it and he's meeting with his team about going back to Dark Skies now, working on outdoor lighting audits. I think Scott went and did one, did one the other night, kind of driving around. It's a good time of year to do it as things get dark here at four thirty this time of year, so. And then also working with the stakeholder, the community group on potentially doing sections of town, too, to kind of get a better sense of how many parcels, how many properties are we talking about in terms of non-compliance? And, and getting sort of an inventory of that non-compliance? And where should our, our efforts be directed, right, in terms of our dollars? We have the rebate program, how do we better assist property owners to, to getting under compliance? And then, of course, we have that grant, those grants coming through on doing the development code audit. And staff will start working with a consultant on that project, which will eventually go from the planning commission and, and city council.
So that, we, it was approved, our, our application was approved to get the funds?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, great.
Sorry if we missed that announcement, but yeah.
I might have missed it too, so yeah, thank you.
What works? Yeah, I think that's, that's it. Any questions, staff? We are, well, last thing, our, our next meeting is December tenth and that we are planning on doing a joint meeting with Sisters Park and Recreation District that evening. So if you have agenda topics, let me know. I'll work with Jen Holland on that. If there's anything in particular you want to hear from SBRD that, you know, mentioned the park, but any other items that are of interest, obviously a big part of the conversation would be the Northwest Park Master Plan and how we might be able to work together in the future on that. But that will be on December tenth and that's the only meeting in December. So we're down to one of the last meetings and last meeting in twenty twenty five.
What best? All right.
It did.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Jordan. Council, councilors, any updates you want to share?
I can be short. I didn't have a whole lot and of course I forgot my thing back at the office, so I don't have all my notes and stuff. I know I'm busy tomorrow. I have a twelve o'clock, let's see, Explore Sisters meeting and then an ETO meeting at one thirty right after and then planning commission tomorrow evening. So I'm busy tomorrow from lunch on. But I think we're doing a really good job of trying to stay ahead of some of these big issues. So just kudos to all you guys staying on top of stuff. And we're really starting to hit our stride and which is great because I think we should take this December break and use it and not worry about stuff for about three weeks. That'd be pretty sweet.
Nice.
That's, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Anyone else want to go?
I'll go. I filled in for Mayor Letts at the Co-Act meeting and they gave an update. If you recall back in January, Central Oregon Land Watch gave us a presentation regarding the four wildlife crossings that they're planning to put between here and Saddle Lake. And at that time, costs were estimated at about sixty-two million. They're now estimating them about eighty million, so about twenty million a crossing. So right now, they've put up sixty cameras, so make sure you wait while you go by the Saddle Lake to monitor activity there. And right now, they do not have any money. They're currently trying to generate funds and for, for design, which would be the next piece. They're also, ODOT is planning on their capital improvement project plan. They want to get that done by the end of twenty twenty six, so they're reaching out to the representatives as I notified Mayor Letts to find out what our local needs and priorities are, our top projects, ODOT projects, so they can hopefully include those. I checked in on MERV this month. They have moved, you know, originally they've been over here at SBRD. They went over to Core this time and they aligned their date with the food bank at Core, which was great. When I went by, Matt Olson was actively sitting down with a gentleman discussing some employment opportunities. I also spoke with Lou Blanchard and he says they're really working hard to get folks employed and not rely on the services completely to, you know, take the time to try to get a resume together or try to get some assistance from MERV to find employment. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that, that's going on and I'm glad MERV is gonna be there again one more time this month. And then when the weather gets cold, they will be moving inside into Core. They've got a nice conference room in there. So more to hear about that. It's really good.
Thank you for your work with MERV. I know you had a lot to do with that. When Tammy was talking about it earlier, I, I wanted to say that, but I didn't want to interrupt the presentation, so.
Oh, yeah. I think it's great that we even have that opportunity to, to bring it here. So it'll be nice to have Matt maybe come in, maybe next year, just kind of give us an update of how, how it's been going here in Sisters.
Yeah.
And then, well, several other things, but I'm with the Flat Fire C four C event, which was great, greatly attended. I saw all of you were there, too. And Counselor McDougal and I did conversations with councilors at the Children's Pop-Up Museum at SBRD and the kids really could care less that we were there. But we even tried to pawn off some of the stickers, thought those would work. But we did get some feedback, though, that it's great to see us going out there to the community and being there. Even if there's nobody talking to us at that particular event, people see us. Oh, that's nice that he cares. So, yeah, that's it.
I don't have much, I pretty much said it during the workshop. So I will say that the plans that you saw were very well received by the advisory group. They liked them a lot better than what they seemed to have the three processes. And just have to wait and see. I think, I think that they're, they're kind of in the same boat we are, which is like, this looks real interesting. Let's talk about how we're gonna do it, what it might look like if we scale it back. So kind of that approach that was suggestive, looking at staging. So I think there's a little more discussion to have and, and maybe something that's not a bad idea, something to look at is, do we put in some kind of a pad that could support a winter ice rink or something? I don't know. But those are all things to look at as we move forward, so I was pleasantly surprised. That's it. I'm done.
Okay. Just since I mentioned it earlier, did the three-day rooftops to ridge tops, ridge tops, rooftops, everybody got it confused. Fire mitigation conference sponsored by the Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office and Oregon Department of Forestry. It's a bend last week. Obviously, there's some representation from our fire district, but it was a really wide mix of attendees, which was great because wildfire mitigation is not, does not land in one discipline or one department or one district or one office. It really needs everyone to participate and lean in. So, so that was a lot of fun to meet some people from all across the state and the different walks, whether they were, you know, OSU or fire districts or, you know, building inspectors and, you know, people who have, you know, organizations like Heart of Oregon Core, you know, similar to that, you know, youth, youth education and, and skills training. And, you know, they did an exercise in the beginning that was really interesting that they, you know, basically said, you know, you know, vote on the screen, right, on the, these top ten issues people have, and you know, kind of rate them. And of course, the top two issues everybody have is funding and capacity, right, enough people to do the work. And so part of the exercise was like, okay, well, we knew these were gonna be the top two. And so surprised they will never get solved, you will never have enough money and you'll never, never have capacity. So accepting that, you know, what can you do?
Go down to number three.
Right, exactly. But just, you know, what can you do? And everybody had, you know, it was kind of an exercise around the table and everybody had some great answers. But, but it really just highlighted partnerships and I think it was, and relationships because especially, you know, as I told people, I'm like, I'm from a small town and there's, nothing happens without partnerships. Nobody has the money or the staff to do anything. And so, so it made me kind of look at it a little differently. Sometimes I think, we think, well, we have to have a partnership because, you know, unfortunately, we don't have the money or staff. But it's like, well, no, partnerships are actually a great thing to have, to strengthen a, a project. And especially, you know, this one, just wildfire mitigation demands it because it touches so many areas of our lives. So, you know, and I will say that, you know, it was great to share the sister's story and the sister's way, you know, with a lot of people and, and, you know, and saying, oh, we're gonna adopt R three twenty seven next week. I think we're voting, I can't, can't speak for everybody. It's like, oh, do you have a lot of pushback from builders? And like, no, like.
Not one comment.
No, not one comment. You know, and I think especially in, in Deschutes County or Central Oregon, it's, it's been many years in the, in the making, but you know, you know, the builders, the realtors, the designers. I think, you know, it's been this, this long education process. And I think we've done it really well here, especially in Sisters, where it's not to say that passing the code is hard, but it's kind of the easy part, right? It's when people started coming and pulling the permits and then, then we'll start hearing some opinions, I think. But, but people were really amazed about that, you know. I said, well, you know, we have this great partner in Citizens for Community, we have a great partner in our fire district. And, you know, people were really impressed and sometimes envious of, of, you know, what, what we have here. So always, you know, that was an enjoyable conversation to have with people, so that was a great event. And, yeah, the state, the state has dedicated funding for the first time ever for wildfire mitigation and it's not a ton of money, you know, considering this for the entire state. And, but it's the first time ever that there's dedicated stable funding. I think over the next two years, forty-two million dollars they're hoping to get.
Well, we're the only one who's adopted that we can take.
Yeah, I know, I think that's it. Well, then that was the topic and I had, I had COCO this week, Central Oregon Cities Organization. And I think, I know in the past, the December meeting was, we talked about this, it's more of a luncheon and we invite other people and we were kind of talking a little bit about what the invitee list would be, but I'm assuming it will be councilors. We never said that, but that's what happened last year, because I remember attending. So put that on your calendar.
Usually the second week.
Yeah, it's the fifteenth. It'll be the afternoon of December fifteenth.
Is it a parade?
Monday.
It's a Monday.
Yeah. But we, but yeah, trying to kind of come up with our priorities for next year. You know, obviously it's a short session, so can't be too long of a list. And, you know, COCO is tri-counties or beyond that. Also, they sent us information, the, the revenue forecast came out. They do a quarterly revenue forecast at the state and obviously it had been a lot of very doom and gloom. They were projecting a. very doom and gloom. They were projecting a, a, um, deficit of like three hundred and twenty-seven million dollars over what they thought, you know, we were gonna get in the spring. Um, thankfully, it was only, did you read that today? It was only sixty-eight million?
Yeah, sixty-three.
Sixty-three, somewhere around there. So, oh, you know, surrounding error. Yeah. So not, you know, not as dire, I think is what the, the name of the email was. Not as dire.
Not as doomy, but.
Yeah. Yes, exactly. Uh, you know, so attended community builders with C4C today. Um, that was at the Lazy Z Ranch, so that was fun to see what they've done out there. Um, just outside the city. And, but when people were kind of going around the room, a lot of nonprofits like to, to attend that meeting and, and that was the common theme was lost grant funding, grant funding's drying up. Opportunities are, you know, money's getting yanked that they had promised and is now gone. Um, that was the common theme. Um, unfortunately, um, that's just the, the world we're living in at the moment, so, um, must be the bearer of bad news, but just, just take that in to account that that's, that, you know, it's being felt everywhere. Um, and it was a community with so many nonprofits as we too, and, you know, it ends up affecting everybody, so. Uh, but that's a great event 'cause people can, you know, learn to share resources and, and, and with each other, so. A lot of good networking happening there. And then, um, you and I attended a meeting over at Fan.
Yeah.
We did, we did do that together a couple of weeks ago. Um.
Very informed.
Yeah, I've never gotten to talk to them, uh, you know, they're right across the street, so, um, you know, they're the, um, you know, Teresa there's been there for decades and so, uh, you know, a wealth of knowledge, but you know, as, as the fans go in Central Oregon, this was kind of the most well-funded, partially, you know, they're funded from the state through the, the Education District.
Right, yep.
And how, however, because our community is so generous, um, you know,
They're a line item in our budget.
Right, yes, exactly. Yeah, thank you.
You drop checks off.
Yeah, or, or materials or, or supplies or.
I have coats in my car I need to take over there, getting cold.
Yeah, um, you know, they're they, they could always use more, however, um, yeah. They're, they're very thankful, you know, for the, the community's support and, um, you know, they feel like they're able to do a lot of great work. Um, you know, we asked them kind of what they needed, um, and really, they were saying the only thing that is, um, kind of something that they really need. They're seeing kind of an uptick in domestic abuse and not having an ability to temporarily house, uh,
People.
People getting out of that situation, whether it's the person or the person and the kids or something like that. So, you know, kind of a very short-term housing need, which is, you know, not unlike a lot of other groups, but, um, so I, I don't know if there's something there we can help them with, but, but that was. I'm curious, uh, uh, I can't imagine they're not, but, uh, did they mention working with Saving Grace out of Bend? I mean, 'cause that's pretty much their, um, main mission statement.
I don't see it in my notes.
Yeah. Yeah.
They talked about some kind of battered women, little village, a place where someone vested by it would go and really kind of.
Yeah, just at least.
Depressed, yeah, say.
Even if it was just very temporary.
They also raised some, some significant issues related to the Ponderosa Heights. While we come housing. Because that, that does not have a residential manager, manager. It's one they had left and they'd gone to different management companies and it's it's dismal. So that may be something that may show up maybe through the Dan Davis or some other things as time goes on. And that speaks to what's gonna be good about having our property, uh, that we're supporting, being managed by the people that build it.
Yeah, 'cause that seems like, yeah, you'd mentioned in your meetings that having management is a very hard thing to find and keep these days. Yeah, you, you're saying, I thought, I thought like in a, what was I talking about? Crow or something like that where I thought that came up. Anyway, um. It sounds familiar, but it doesn't have to do with Crow.
I'm gonna attribute it to you. It was a good comment, so.
Wonder.
That, that and also the.
Congratulations on the comment that you don't remember.
That and also the RV park on the edge of town, but it's, it's another, um.
Another hotspot.
Very.
They're very, they're very concerned there about fire. Fire has, they visit families there and they say there's lots of garbage there. One place had an open sewer line.
Yeah, they're having some leaks over there, I heard, that are very bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, um.
That may be something we need to.
You heard that, you heard that, yeah, sewer line.
Just for that.
Excepting.
Yeah, so it may be something where we need to have a code force will go through to see if, if we've got issues, 'cause, uh, electrical boxes without covers on them, kind of home wiring job being done out of them, things like that. That's what they were saying. I have got hold of it myself, but.
Yeah, again, kind of lack of on-site management.
It's a hard one because for some of those people, it's the only place they have to live, so. But they, they mentioned that was one of the areas that they were very concerned about, for families and young children that were living there in sanitary conditions and fire, garbage and stuff were on outside.
And I did talk to Fire Marshal Puller about that last week when I ran into him. Um, because I know that they'd been talking with him and, and he said this, but I als, we also told her as well, like, you know, some of these are are, are, you know, code issues that our co-compliance office could, officer can maybe
Yeah.
help with because she hadn't talked to our staff yet. Um, 'cause some of the stuff was just out of, you know, Mr. Puller's wheelhouse, so.
And you, you provided contact information.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so, so, yeah, so, but overall, you know, it was a great conversation and, and, you know, they're very thankful for the, uh, you know, 'cause we'd supply the grant for the shower tokens and, um, things like that. So, um, so, yeah, just, uh, yeah, great conversation with them, at least for now, right across the street, so.
One thing she did say, we asked the question that, that they know of at least ten school-age youths that are unhoused, that are living in the forest and, and she said there were another ten that they knew that were to the age of zero to five.
Yeah. So.
When it comes to the children, their numbers are always the best.
Yeah. Um, I would assume so.
The county doesn't.
Yeah.
Isn't able to track them as easy as Fan does, because they're right there with the school district. They know its case.
Yeah, some of those, uh, not that this makes it any better, but are also doubling up, not just people who are living, you know, sure, in forests, so.
That's true.
Okay, um, I have, I have things, uh, great, yeah.
'Cause I didn't wanna end on a bad note.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Well.
There we go.
Uh, um, yeah, uh. Like to be full of good news. Um, so, uh, Carrie and I attended the, um, Coordinated Houseless Response Office meeting and the Regional Housing, I think Committee, Commission. Anyway, meetings on Monday night and, um, uh, few topics came out of there. First, um, I'll talk about the, the Housing Committee and they, they brought in a consultant to look at the different, um, kind of housing silos, you know, work that's going on in silos, um, in the tri-county area. So we're talking about the two, um, groups that we're part of, plus the, um, Houses Leadership Coalition, and there's one more called the MAC. Um, and really, um, they showed that, that consultants they brought in had done a bunch of research, had, you know, sessions, listening sessions with different people that are involved. And, you know, kind of what came out of it is a bunch of spaghetti. Where, you, you know, it's just not a clear path, um, of, you know, how people are communicating, how services are being, um, offered, and it's not just con, uh, confusing for the people, um, you know, working on those committees, but it's very confusing for somebody who is unhoused. You know, figure out, you know, how to work their way through the system, even with assistance. And so, um, it's, it was a, a really good feeling to know that somebody is working on, on tangling that. Um, and, uh, I felt pretty good about the, the feedback they had gathered. I was like, oh, yeah. Yeah, that, that makes sense. And even it's, if it's not exactly saying sisters, it, it felt like the information they were sharing, um, did cover the things, um, you know, the types of issues we're dealing with here. So that's a positive piece. Um, another piece that's going to be coming out probably between December and January. Um, there's a subgroup on the Housing Committee who, um, looks at legislation. And so, um, they are kind of trying to package some information so that we would have time to like bring back information to council and say, are we interested in showing our support for this or should we leave our name off it? Kind of thing. So, um, it's a little vague right now, but it will come documented and, um, you know, we can take a look at it as a group and decide whether, um, we would like to support the legislative package that the commission is, or committee is putting together for pretty much the tri-county area. And, um, yeah, like, again, I don't know what it looks like, but, um, just expect that to be coming.
Do you have a sense how much they're gonna get it to us ahead of time?
Um,
They're just curious.
It won't be like words in, ahead of time, um, and the way they presented it, well, only because there's only so much time between now and then. Um, but the way they presented it is that it would be probably more in, uh, groups of legislation, you know, like um, something that's trying to accomplish this, something that can accomplish this. Um, um, it, it, it felt like they were packaging it in a, a small enough package, that it wouldn't take forever to review it.
That, that's kind of was, yeah.
Yeah.
Something that's significant where we might or might not want to support, or to have, be able, a lot of them be able to look at the thing.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. But I, I've just been, uh, forthright in saying that, you know, I can't make that decision on my own. I can't put the logo on it, um, without support from council. And then the last piece out of, of that, um, Carrie sent us, uh, thank you, Carrie, um, did a really nice write-up. Um, as, um, Mary Letts mentioned, there's a lot of funding that's been pulled from various avenues. Um, every organization's feeling it. And in the Houseless Response, uh, meeting, um, Neighbor Impact, um, has a seat on the board as um, one of our local providers. And, um, as the document that Carrie put together's shared, there's a potential for a funding gap in some of the heating, um, assistance that's given out. And, um, the, the ask from Carrie, because if, you know, when we ask staff to do more work, we have to, you know, as a council, look at it and say, do we all, are we all in agreement or not? We can't just go throwing things on people's plates. Um, so the ask is, are we okay with continuing the research to understand what the gap would be for City of Sisters residents who might not get their assistance from Neighbor Impact if this, um, they called it LIHEAP or LI.
LIHEAP.
LIHEAP. Thank you. I was like, that was a few days ago. Um, anyway, that, if there's a potential that the funds won't come through from the federal government, which could leave some of our Sisters residents without their energy assistance. And so the thought is if we approve that and get the head nod that, um, Carrie, we continue to work with Neighbor Impact to get the data, so we could understand what that commitment might be. So, that, it's, then we would look that at the December tenth meeting. Is that, am I?
I'm a yes.
Good, that, okay. So, it's, she's looking for head nods. Anybody have any?
Yeah, I, I, uh, sent an email back to Carrie and, and I copied you. I don't know if you had a chance to see it yet.
I did.
Um, I would like to understand a little bit more about CEC's Project Helping Hands. Um, or they go directly to the utility. Um, and, uh, they do have applications and I'd, I'd be curious as to whether our Sisters residents are taking advantage of that as well. Um, it did say that if the resident was on the, um, LIHEAP, um, program within the last twelve months, then they will not qualify for the Project Helping Hands. But I just felt like that was some data that might help us in our decision. And I also saw in the letter that perhaps the LIHEAP funds would become available within a month. So, do we just maybe just give it a month before we have staff time spent on this? I don't know. I was, I don't know how, how much they felt strongly that it might come through in a month.
Carrie, can you, can you help? Help me. Um, I, I'm not sure if there's, there's a potential for a gap um, of the assistance, like before the LIHEAP money comes through. So potentially people not getting a month's worth of the assistance. Um, which leaves them without heat and that honestly, like the first part of this week just felt like a tragic story to me. Uh, yeah. Um, the stories in that meeting are, are hard. So.
And, and LIHEAP will also include like wood.
So, so, yeah, that was the distinction I was gonna make. So the CEC program I will look into, but that will only be for CEC electricity.
Yeah.
The LIHEAP program goes for propane or wood pellets or wood, and it has a number of providers um, that can be used. Obviously, CEC is our electricity provider, but the propane, there's a couple of different companies, oil as well is involved in that, so it's a broader program than the CEC program for folks that need it. Um, as far as the gap, um, they, Neighbor Impact found out this morning, yesterday morning, that LIHEAP may be released. Um, but I think everybody's on kind of the, are things really gonna get released? Are they not? So, um, I think the ask for myself is to, um, continue to work with Neighbor Impact, having conversations, looking into things like that, with the potential to bring something back on December tenth if LIHEAP has not been released. So it gives us some time. If they're gonna release funds, it may be as early as, you know, early December. Um, but in the meantime, kind of just having conversations with Neighbor Impact with Joe and our finance department about what would this look like? Um, but, and I don't think it's a incredibly heavy lift for me as far as time goes, but, um, it would be unfortunate for those folks to have a gap where they're choosing, um, eat over food or some of those different things. And then it sounds like those stories are out there and that's happening right now quite extensively with people. So that's the, the reason why I wanted to talk about it tonight and maybe just start gaining more information if you're interested in that potential piece. Um, I don't have any idea of how many folks and Sisters at this point use the LIHEAP. I can't imagine it's a tremendous amount of money, because if you saw a little bit of the parameters that I put in the, in the, um, note, they're pretty tight with who can apply for those programs. And I do know that Neighbor Impact is one of our trusted partners, that it probably does a lot of work, um, in the community, so it feels somewhat like Fan and our base water wastewater program, where they already know what they're doing and getting programs quickly, so.
I, I, I would rather have you spend the time and try and get ahead of it than be in an emergency situation on December tenth. And I just think that, you know, sometimes when we have staff do things, if it ends up, you know, nothing happens and that's okay. Better just try and stay ahead of it because it's already kind of a situation from the stories you've heard, right? Yeah. So I'd rather stay ahead of it, we can. That's my head nod.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I'm assuming it's not a heck of a lot of
No, it should be emails and conversations.
Yeah.
In the case that moving forward, it would then be sent, you know, staff report and some work on how we make that funding happen.
Thanks very.
'Cause it really isn't just Neighbor Impact going through their lists and.
Correct. It's Neighbor Impact and people applying who have applied for that program who are on basically, I believe, hold right now, because there's no funding to give out. So if you look at their website, I put a link and thing, you don't see any of our providers on there as who they can use right now. And I actually clarified that with Molly Heist, because I was like, doesn't look like you actually help anybody here, our CEC or anything. And she said they had to pull it all off because they don't have any funding for it right now. So it should all go back on once they get funding opened up.
And I had asked, uh, Carrie, just as a side note, on, kind of related to this was, um, the fact that, you know, we, as a city, have a low-income assistance program for our water and sewage utility. And, um, I just had a question of how many residents are taking advantage of that and so twenty- I just had a question of how many residents are taking advantage of that, and so twenty, twenty-three, about twenty-three residents taking advantage of that program. Which is good to hear. And then I was thinking about the, um, I'm talking about the nonprofits, and obviously, we have quite a few here in Sisters. Um, and considering that there might be some struggles going on, that maybe we revisit our community grant pool for next year, potentially bump that up a bit.
And just for clarity, and Joe, you might be able to speak a little better, that we have our wastewater and water low-income program, but we also give Fan a four thousand dollar grant every year, where they distribute as needed, and they let us know to build a gap in for folks who might be just having that one-month issue. So we do, you do approve that in the budget half for the last few years.
And, and they commented on that, by the way, in the meeting, and said it was extremely kind and helpful, that, that they really value our partnership.
And I think in the conversations that were had in our meeting, one of the, the big conversations right now is keeping people out of houselessness, and things like, these programs can help people get back on their feet as needed. So, I think they're pretty beneficial, and for small, really small dollar amounts, um, in our community at least.
Well, it's also very hard to get money that doesn't have things attached to it and stipulations, and when we give our money out in the grant program, it's pretty loose money, um, for the most part. I mean, we don't put a lot of stipulations on there, as long as the organization is good, so.
Carrie, if you're gonna, uh, research that part about C E C and the, the project helping hands, um, could you also, um, inquire, I, I, my understanding is that, um, certain utility companies, and I don't know if this is, uh, state law or not, but if there's miners in the home, that they cannot turn off the electricity.
I'm looking into that.
So, I, I just would like, I'm curious what their policy is, C E C.
Okay.
Oh, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, that is.
We have one more thing.
Uh, I think that's enough.
Something happy.
Oh, you want some? Okay, you want a happy thing?
Yeah.
All right, so.
Our new bus line calls it in.
Yeah, uh, no. Um, so yesterday was the, um, Public Works Advisory Board meeting, and again, I've continued to be impressed by the, the board members. I mean, just the interesting background they come from, but, um, we did have a presentation on the, um, some design plans for the, um, waterwizing and dispensable space, maybe park-ish setting out behind City Hall, and, um, yeah, kind of, uh, I think there's a, a possibility for it to be a really nice space, and, um, Jordan and I had our meeting today, and, yeah, we'll be having to look closely at what that budget is, because that could go from here to here. But, um, I think, you know, even a lower budget, um, project could be really nice, so that's exciting.
And on a personal note, I had to fire department come by and walk my house yesterday.
Well, there at my house today. So, yeah.
It's, it's helpful. I mean, it's helpful, because we hear this, we know this, but Judy doesn't hear it, I suppose. I mean, you do, it's good to, to have someone else come in, say, yeah, you need to do this, you need to do that. They told me what company I already knew, which is my beautiful white pearl from House, which the previous owner planted, and I have Christmas tree bulbs on it, has to come down. I do that.
That's why they haven't been in my house yet.
Nile's not only a river in Egypt. All right, um, I adjourn this meeting.
Good job.